And the invocation, and then I'd have Mr. Libel lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
Let's pray together. Father, in your word, you instruct us to pray in this way, hallowed be your name. And so, Lord, we come before you this morning in that mindset, in that spirit. Lord, we give you praise and honor you to be the great Creator, the one who made us and formed us, the one who has guided us and led us to this point, the one who cares for us and blesses us when we follow in obedience to your commands. And so, Lord, we do acknowledge you to be our sustainer and our redeemer, and we give you great thanks. Lord, I give you thanks for the opportunity to be here in this assembly this morning. I thank you for the privilege of living in a free land, a land where we can speak our minds openly and express our views and opinions and work together for the common good. Lord, I thank you for these men and women who have dedicated themselves to service, Lord. I pray for guidance and direction and blessing in their life. And Father, I pray that you would make their work here truly productive. Lord, we ask for your continued blessing as we seek to be obedient to your word and as we seek to serve, just as the word commands us to do, to love one another and care for one another, guide and protect one another, especially those who are unable to protect themselves. And so, Father, guide us in this meeting and in these proceedings today. In the name of Jesus, our Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a chance to look over these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes of April 10th in the regular in both meetings on April 10th.
Okay. All right. We have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not? Motion moves. We're going to take a recess, and we're going to open to the Port Authority. Okay. Again, that's an approval of the minutes.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, so we have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have any public comment on the Port Authority? Seeing none, we'll close that section, and we will open for new business.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
I have none.
I have none, sir.
I have none.
I have none, and so we have any old business that we want to discuss? Seeing none, we'll close that, and we will reopen our regular meeting, and with that, we're going to go to employee recognition, which will go to Mr. Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board of County Commissioners, good morning. We're going to do something a little different here today, so bear with me. We're going to try to make this as smooth as possible. I'm sure we're going to stumble a little bit, but that's okay. We're going to start recognizing our employees a little bit more often here. We're going to do this quarterly. This is for those who have reached milestones in years of service with Putnam County. I think it's a very important and part of the message that we're trying to send to staff and the community, how much we appreciate our staff and for the good job and the good work that they do for our community. So at this time, if I could get all my Board of County Commissioners to please join me in front of the dais and Mr. Downs as well from the Clerk's office, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Manning, if you'd join us, Ms. Papel, I'd like for you to be part of this, and those department heads, I have someone on the list this morning, I believe we have Mr. Stender, Chief Row May, Mr. Powell, and Mr. Gass, and Mr. Tompkins, if you'd join us up front too, please. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to the Honorable Tim Parker, the Property Appraiser for Putnam County, for recognition of his employee, Mr. Donald Hunt.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the County Commission and the citizens of Putnam County for allowing me the privilege to recognize one of our employees for the years of service. Donald Hunt joined our office February 13th, 2013, in the position of Field Appraiser. Donald has earned his Certified Florida Evaluator designation after completing the coursework and tests associated with the designation. We appreciate Donald's dedication to service, as exemplified in his recent efforts to help Putnam County receive relief due to Hurricane Matthew. His certificate reads Certificate of Appreciation. We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Donald Hunt for outstanding service and contributions to the citizens of Putnam County for five years and award this certificate from Putnam County Property Appraiser this 24th day of April 2018. Tim Parker, Property Appraiser. Several of his coworkers are present here today to help honor Donald. Please join me in congratulating Donald for his five years of service to the citizens of Putnam County.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. If we could get Ms. Lori Parker, our HR Director, up at the podium now. She's going to call out the length of service employees, starting with our five years' length of service. What I'd like to do at this time, Mr. Chairman Goddard, if you would pass out the pins and the certificates, and Mr. Hunt, I believe we have one for you too, sir, so don't leave us if you don't have to. And go ahead, when you call your name out, please come up, receive your pin and your certificate, then please waltz the dais here and get your congratulatory from these fine gentlemen up front and ladies up front, and then please hang around so we can get a group photo afterwards. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Lori.
We're going to start with the employees being recognized for five years of service. The first one on the list is Catherine Michael. If she could come up. Catherine is the GIS Manager for IT Department, and she has been here for five years, and she is... This is a certificate and a pin for you, and it just states that we hereby express our sincere appreciation and grateful recognition of your years of service, and this certificate is awarded by Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on this 24th day of April 2018. Thank you. The next person being recognized for five years of service is Adam Marquez. If he could come up? Come on, Adam. Adam is a Crew Leader with Public Works. Thank you. The next person with five years of service is Michael Woods. Michael is also with Public Works, and he's Equipment Operator Two. And the last person being recognized for five years of service is Jean Colvin. Jean. Jean is a Trades Worker with General Services, as most of you know. Next, we're recognizing employees for 10 years of service. I'm not sure if they're here or not because they work with Fire EMS and they're on duty, but let me check the audience. If Jake Tolett or Jeremy Ray, if they could step forward? Okay, well Jake Tolett and Jeremy Ray both work with Fire EMS. Jake is a paramec firefighter, and Jeremy Ray is a firefighter too with Emergency Services. Thank you. Next is our employees being recognized for 15 years of service. One is Billy Robbins. He's an Equipment Operator Four with Public Works, and he's out sick today, so we'd like to recognize him for 15 years. And Lisa Suarez, if she could come forward. She's being recognized for 15. Lisa is the Enforcement Division Manager, and this is her 15th year with Putnam County. Thanks, Lisa. And last but not least, we have an employee here who's been here 30 years. Yeah. James Robbins with Santation, please come up. James is the Landfill Solidway Supervisor with Santation. Thank you. And then the group picture, please. I don't know how we're going to squeeze everybody in, but yeah, you need to get in it.
Mr. Chairman, if we could continue on with Customer Service Recognition?
Yes, sir.
We'll give them a second. Commissioners, thank you folks for indulging me in that this morning, and I want to thank all the Constitutionalists that were here as well. I think this is a step in the right direction for us here in Putnam County to let our staff know just how much we really do appreciate the service that they give us, and to have someone here 30 years is a tremendous accomplishment, so that was, take great pride in that, absolutely. We're going to move on to Item C on the agenda, which is Customer Service Recognition. We've got five individuals on this list. If I could get Mr. Mike Brown, Ms. Pam Washington, Ms. Kathy Napier, Mr. Bob Crane, and Mr. Donald Peckham to join me here at the podium. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, fellow citizens of Putnam County, these individuals that you see in front of you this morning have received accommodations from our citizens from Putnam County for coming in and needing assistance here in Putnam County, and these folks have gone above and beyond the call of duty and service to provide excellent, outstanding customer service to those folks. We've received written notification from the folks that want to recognize people here today, and I just want to say, as a county administrator, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners and all citizens, thank you all for the service that you are providing to the customers of Putnam County. Your department head should be very proud of you, as I am, as well as the Commissioners, and just want to say thank you so much for being a part of our team and doing the things that make us look good every day. You know, you are the reason why we're successful, so thank you all very, very much. Thank you.
Give a minute to everybody, sit down, and then we're going to...
And last but not least, Mr. Chairman, we've got one more recognition this morning. This is for your Employee of the Quarter. Mr. Manning, would you please join me at the podium, sir? I am going to turn this part of the presentation over to Mr. Stacy Manning, our County Attorney. Stacy, thank you so much for doing this.
Sure.
Can I ask Tabitha Lassiter to come forward, please? Tabitha? As you know, Tabitha is my legal assistant, and she has been chosen as the Employee of the Quarter by a committee of employees here at Putnam County for the third quarter fiscal year 2017-2018. She started with the county in 2000 and has held positions of Staff Assistant Two, Codes Enforcement Officer, Executive Assistant to the County Administrator, and of course, now as my legal assistant. And I just want to say that I nominated Ms. Lassiter because she really goes above and beyond, and I noticed that from the moment I started working here in Putnam County when she was working for the county administrator. I was lucky enough to have lured her away from that position, sorry, Mr. Suggs, but she goes above and beyond, not only as my assistant, but really to help everybody that she can. If she knows the answer or knows where to look for the answer, she's going to find it, whether that is for any of you all, or for me, or for any of the staff, or for anybody out in the public. She does what she can for everybody, so I think this is really, this is really great and very, very, very much earned by Ms. Lassiter. So I want to present to you the Employee of the Quarter Award and recognition of exemplary service for the quarter ending June 30, 2018. Awarded this certificate from the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners, given this 24th day of April 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, and certainly congratulations to Ms. Lassiter, extremely well deserved. I'll echo everything that Mr. Manning just stated up here this morning. She is certainly a source of information for us here. She's been here a long time, and she does a fantastic job. Commissioners, that ends our presentation this morning on employee recognitions. Again, thank you so much for indulging us this morning, and for the folks here in the audience for being so patient with us this morning, but these are your folks that work for you, and just want to give them an opportunity to shine one more time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have the proclamation for the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. National Law Enforcement Week and Putnam County Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, whereas the week of May 13th, 2018 through May 19th, 2018, has been designated as National Law Enforcement Week, and whereas the day of May 10th, 2018, has been designated locally as Putnam County Law Enforcement Memorial Day, and whereas Putnam County has dedicated law enforcement men and women serving our county under difficult, stressful, and often dangerous circumstances, and whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual's right to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the perseverance of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Whereas Florida and the municipalities within Putnam County desire to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own law enforcement officers comprised of city, town, county, and state law enforcement agencies, now therefore be it recognized and proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners that the week of May 13th, 2018 through May 19th, 2018 be recognized as National Law Enforcement Week, and that May 10th, 2018 is proclaimed Putnam County Law Enforcement Memorial Day. Be it further proclaimed, that the citizens of Putnam County are urged to show their support and appreciation of our law enforcement officers who give their lives to protect and serve the communities by attending the countywide law enforcement memorial service to be held Thursday, May 10th, at the Ravine Gardens State Park in Palaca. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this proclamation.
I'll second that. Have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion moves. Our next one will be our proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness. Mr. Commissioner Pickens, would you read that?
Yes, I will, Chairman Goddard. Mary, are you coming up front?
Okay, proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in the community, and whereas statistics show one in five women and one in 67 men have experienced completed rape or attempted rape in their lives, and it is estimated that 67.5% of rapes go unreported, and whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to change the shocking reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, fewer than 5% of completed or attempted rapes against college women were reported to law enforcement, and whereas one in three women experience physical, sexual violence by inmate partner, and whereas the theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month campaign is Embrace Your Voice. The campaign challenged us to recognize the power of both our individual and collective voices to create a culture of respect and equality and safety in our homes, our schools, our businesses, and our community. We know that sexual violence thrives when it is not taken seriously, and victim blaming goes unchecked. Let us all join in using our voices to prevent sexual violence by believing survivors, challenging victim blaming, refuting myths about rape, teaching healthy boundaries, and respecting the boundaries of others. And whereas we join advocates and communities across Putnam County, Florida, embracing our voices to prevent sexual violence, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day, one of each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. We all know survivors of sexual violence. They are our friends, our family, our neighbors, and coworkers. They are us. Working together, we can raise awareness, change attitudes, and help prevent sexual assault. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby declares the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Putnam County, and calls upon all citizens, community agencies, civic organizations, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation, to educate the community, thereby preventing sexual assault and strengthening the communities in which we live. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners participates and supports all persons in making a conscientious effort to prevent sexual assaults, done, ordered, adopted this 24th day of April, 2018. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Second. Proper first, proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It sounds unanimous. Thanks.
Just a couple of things. Behind me or with me are the individuals who are part of the Putnam County Sexual Assault Response Team. So part of Department of Health, the Office of the Attorney General, we've got the Sheriff's Office, we've got the Police Department, and also Lee Conley participates, and many others as part of this response. It's, this is the one team for sexual violence that has, is housed in a county health department as well, which speaks highly of the issue. I don't know how else to put it. It's something that we need to address. So one of the things that I'm asking you is that tomorrow is National Denim Day. It is the 19th year that it's celebrated as a response against an overturn in the Italian Supreme Court of an assault rape case, because they blame the woman because she was wearing jeans that must have conspired to be raped, of course. So one of the things that I ask for you is that, so all of the women in the legislature in Italy the next day showed up in jeans to the legislature as a form of protest. And you can protest verbally, or you can protest quietly, and this way, I'm going to ask you to protest quietly and verbally by wearing your jeans. If you've got teal, teal is the color for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so if you 'll wear those, and if you'll send pictures to me, and we will publish them for your support, but I appreciate that. When you participate in Denim Day, you make it possible for more sexual assault survivors to reach out and find help. You promote prevention through education so that sexual violence does not occur. You encourage institutional and societal change, and the more powerful is you make a powerful statement without saying a word. And as I said, the motto for this year is let your voice be heard. We also want to invite you on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00, we're having our Open House for Community Information at the Children's Advocacy Center. We work really closely with adults and children as well, and so you'll see some of their artwork and some of their expressions of how they're going through their trauma, so we encourage you to visit us. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman, while we're getting reorganized, on behalf of the request by Ms. Mary Garcia, the county administrator is going to go ahead and make it an official invitation for those staff members that would like to wear jeans until tomorrow.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Ben Bates?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we do move on to next, could I have a point of privilege here? On the last proclamation with the Sheriff's Office, Captain Rose is in the audience here, and if you'd come down, bring...
Major?
Major, yeah.
Greenwood.
He's not, Major Greenwood, could you come be a part? Thank you. Okay. Captain Rose and Major Greenwood are filling in for...
They want your picture, buddy. Gentlemen, please remain at the podium for a second.
Captain Rose, if you'd like to comment about the goings-on at the Sheriff's Department with our sheriff and where he's at today, I think that's very important that we recognize what's happened.
Sure. On behalf of the sheriff and the colonel, we appreciate the proclamation from the chair and the fellow commissioners. Unfortunately, both of them could not attend this morning because they are attending funeral services for the Gilchrist County deputies who were murdered last week. So again, we appreciate the proclamation, and we appreciate your support for local law enforcement. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if we could do a moment of silence, if we could all stand in honor of those men that were killed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, for that opportunity.
Is Mr. Ben Bates here?
Mr. Martinez is.
Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Good morning.
Good morning. We're not quite ready since my two colleagues are missing in action. Robert Mills is the presenter, and Ben Bates is bringing the books to give to you, so if you please wait a few minutes for us.
You will.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. We do have a 9:30 certain public hearing? Yes, sir. It is item, where is it? Item 15 on your agenda? Item 15, yes. Okay. Well, then let's move to our 9:30 certain public hearing. Okay, that'll be Public Works.
Press, Tompkins, Public Works Director. This is a follow-up to what we did on the Moore Haven Trail. We, it was discussed at our Transportation Committee. It was decided that we would turn this property back over to the actual property owners, and this is the public hearing to do that today.
So is there any public wants to speak on this? Any in the public? Please come forward, give your name, your address.
My name's Carter Bailey. I live in St. Augustine, but it's the property that y'all want to deed back to me.
Yes, sir.
My question is, I mean, why was it taken in the first, why did you request, requested in the first place?
That one I can't answer. Mr. Tompkins, can you answer that question?
Sometimes we do get requests from residents to turn their roads over to the county or trails, whatever it is. I admit, we probably were a little bit overzealous in this. And when we brought it to the board, it was decided that, I think there's like one or two property owners or three property owners on this road, and it was not in the best interest of the county to take this into our maintenance system at this time.
Yes, sir. That's the way I understood it. Please go ahead.
I made no request, and I think the other, well, Pam Chancy didn't make a request. But that being aside, the actual damage to the, to the road is being caused by Moore Haven Trail, and it's being caused by the runoff, which we've discussed before in the last two transportation meetings. I was told that y'all were going to repair those damages to our driveway, to the culvert, before you were going to vacate the deed. And I went out there today and nothing's been done.
Again, I'll have to have Mr. Tompkins.
Yes, sir. We did do some work out there. We were scheduled to do more work. This rain's put us behind in doing it. We are doing corrective action on actual Moore Haven Trail to prevent the runoff from going down this other portion of the road. And I will assure the board that will be done just as soon as we can physically get out there and do it when the weather allows us to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If we vacate this road, does that mean it's a, turns into a public road? Or does it just mean that, what does that mean? Does that mean that we can no longer work on it because we're, it's private?
Yes, sir. We turn back into a private road and we will no longer be responsible to do any maintenance on it.
Well, I remember when we made the commitment to this gentleman that we would, that we would fix that road before we made it private. Okay? Well, if we, if we pass this today instead of tabling it for a further meeting, wouldn't that mean that it turned to private and it would make it illegal for us to go and work on that road?
If I may, Mr. Manning is working on this also, and we have some other documentation that goes back to the property owners. We can hold that documentation until we physically get it done. Like I said, we were trying to get it done. This weather just kind of knocked us for a loop. And I assure you, it will be done. We had, we had it scheduled just two days ago, and we just couldn't get it done.
Press, I'm not trying to be critical. Please don't take this wrong at all. It's just that I didn't want to do anything illegal either.
Right.
So, Mr. Manning, do you think that if we pass this today that we could hold the paperwork and keep it in the county, to keep the county ownership until this, this culvert, I think it was a culvert, wasn't it?
It was a culvert.
Until this culvert's repaired? I know that we approved the repair in, in the transportation workshop.
No, I think in that, in this instance, it would be best not to, it would be better to, to move this to a future hearing until Public Works is able to complete the work on the road. Because once, once the resolution is approved, if approved today, then that effectively does vacate at that point in time, so.
How much time do you think you would need to do this, Press, with a, barring another rain event?
What has to be done is a public hearing, a timed certain public hearings. I don't know if we have enough time to advertise it for the next meeting. But we can certainly get it done, hopefully in the next week or two.
We could continue it till the next meeting and not have to re-advertise that. It's been advertised for this meeting and the continuance would be in public.
Mr. Chairman, I move we continue this item to the next regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Second.
I have a proper first, proper second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And would that also be at 9:30?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I'm fine with that. My only problem is, is that with it out, if it does get vacated back again, what if, what if the county drainage causes the problem again? I mean, that there's no assurance that it won't happen again, and they've been out there trying to prevent it before.
The only thing I can tell you is, give us a call. Yeah, that's, that's about it. We will do everything we can to correct the problem.
Okay. And, and the repairs, what, what are you planning on doing to the culvert? I mean, it's in pretty bad shape. Can I get some feedback from what's going to be done? I mean, I...
Mr. Chairman, we have a transportation workshop again this afternoon.
Yes, we are.
I think that would be the proper place to have this discussion.
That way you can discuss that.
If y'all could make it to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
Okay. Now, we'll move to the presentation, Keep Putnam Beautiful.
Good morning, Chris.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. First, let me introduce myself. I'm Kristin Mitchell. I'm the new director of Keep Putnam Beautiful. I want to apologize for missing last meeting, misunderstanding on my part, and I am very sorry, and I appreciate the opportunity to be back here again. My primary purpose for coming today is to announce the upcoming community event on May 19th. Keep Putnam Beautiful will be facilitating a countywide cleanup. For those in the listening audience not aware, Keep Putnam Beautiful is a nonprofit organization affiliated with Keep America Beautiful. Our mission is to inspire and educate people to take action every day to improve and beautify their community environment. We do this through community gardens, the Adopt a Road programs, litter prevention education, recycling programs, beautification projects, and this once-a-year community cleanup. So far, we've seen a very good response by the citizens of Putnam County to not only come out and participate in the big cleanup, but to continue to make a positive change in their communities year-round. Keep Putnam Beautiful has also enjoyed the generous support of our county officials with the past cleanups, and we're looking forward to that continued support this year. I've brought some flyers with me that I would like to pass on to you, and it gives information about how to sign up for our county cleanup. I would ask today that you would help me spread the word about this event to your districts. I'd also ask if you have the ability that you would participate as well. You can sign up for it at our website at keepputnambeautiful.org. You can bring one person, you can bring 100 people. We would love your support in this. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Good. I just want to welcome Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you.
And thank you. You've come highly recommended, and we'll get off to a good start here. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Torino, Jim. If, now would be a good time if you wanted to come up.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Jim Toronto from the St. Johns River Water Management District. I appreciate the brief opportunity to present to you today. Just an update to good news you've already heard. Through our Call Share program, on April the 10th, our governing board met in Brevard County. And after listening to a presentation by Deputy County Administrator and as well as your Public Works Director, they approved two projects for Putnam County in total of approximately $1.2 million. These are projects that are part of your regional wastewater treatment facility from Pico Road out to Dunn's Creek Bridge. And the two projects themselves are Horse Landing Road and LC Drive. And these are septic-to-sewer conversion hookups. So, want to congratulate again, as you did earlier today, for your employees. I must congratulate and thank your Public Works employees and everyone that was involved in the application submission to our district. Again, it was a good application. Your project scored number 19 and 25. The district awarded 27 projects in the amount of $16 million district-wide. So, Mr. Chair, again, I'd like to congratulate Putnam County for another two great submissions, and we look forward to continued partnership between the district and Putnam County in eradicating, we're looking at up to about 500 pounds of total nutrients that'll be going into the, into our waterways. And this project, once completed, should be reducing that by 500 pounds total a year. So, congratulations on great projects again.
And thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just a deliverer of the message. I'm just the messenger. The true folks out here, Press, Tompkins and his folks, so...
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome very much. On behalf of our Executive Director and our Governing Board, is there anything else that you all want to pass back or anything that we can do?
Thank you.
If I have the opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Martinez?
Are you ready? Okay. All right. Now, we'll move back up here to presentation, building a vibrant community.
Good afternoon, or good morning. Feels like afternoon. Sorry I'm late. My apologies. I'm Robert Mills. I had the opportunity of living here in Palacka from 1988 to 1998. 1998, I moved down to Pensacola, Florida, and found that Escambia County was one of the poorest counties in our state. Our graduation rates in Escambia County were scraping the bottom of the barrel. Young people were exiting Escambia County and Pensacola. There's a man, a successful businessman by the name of Quint Studer, who owned a healthcare consulting company who lived in Pensacola. He sold his company for about $126 million about four years ago, and it's now become his life's passion to help small, struggling communities become vibrant again. And I have had the opportunity to invite Quint to come be in our community. He's going to be with us on May the 4th, the morning of May the 4th, at 9:00 here in this building. And I've come here today to respectfully invite each of you to come and be a part of that. He's going to spend the day before looking at our community, viewing Escambia, viewing Putnam County and Palacka. And then he'll be here the next morning to share with us some of his findings along with the two other members of his team. In my estimation, this is an unequaled opportunity for us to have him. I would encourage you to Google Quint Studer and look at his resume and the things that he's done. And I believe that he's going to be able to bring some real value to us on May the 4th. So, thank you for letting me share that with you, and I really encourage you to come and be a part of that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
May I please? Yeah. Mr. Mills, thank you for making that presentation. I did Google him yesterday, and I also contacted my good friend and County Commissioner, Mr. Rob Williamson, in Escambia County, who spoke highly of him and encouraged everyone, when the man comes to town. He's a very humble and very generous man, and has a very good insight of communities. And so I would encourage all the listening public and people that are watching, avail yourself to come meet this gentleman. And we appreciate you bringing him to Putnam County, your whole team. So, thank you, Mr. Bates and Mr. Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you for that endorsement. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also speak?
Yes, sir, Ms. Turner.
I had the opportunity last week to, to hear about this, and I received an advanced copy of this book, and I read it Sunday. And if anybody cares about our community, they need to read this book. And they need to try to show up for that presentation on May 4th. It will be an interesting presentation. The, the differences between our community and what they did here, from Pensacola to our community being Palacka, is astonishingly the same. The process that they went through to get from where they were to where they are is astonishingly the same, has been tried here before, but they were successful. I highly advise everybody to read this book if they get the time and show up for May 4th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mills, is that going to be in this building or the River Center?
Right here. Right here. Okay. Good. Thank you. Is May 4th, it's a Saturday, isn't it?
No, sir. That's Friday.
It's a Friday. Okay. I will, I'll go ahead and say I cannot attend. I will be out of town, but I appreciate your efforts and to give us this book and also to bring him to town. And I'll definitely read the book and, and look forward to his response.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, may I add something?
A second. Yes, sir.
This is truly a unique opportunity for us, our community. Robert didn't tell you, but this gentleman and his team normally charges somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $100,000 to look at a community and to give recommendations. And because of Robert's relationship with them over the years, he's come into our community, especially almost just coming out of a friendship and a favor to Robert. So this is a unique opportunity for us to take advantage of someone who has done it in Pensacola. And I agree with, with Mr. Turner and Mr. Harvey. I think this is a unique opportunity for us in conjunction with Representative Yojo's Project Putnam to really continue to move our community forward so we make it a better place for all of our citizens to live, work, and play. And I thank you for your opportunity and encourage you to read the book, and I think you will get as excited about this as we are. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. And Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, question for staff. Could we go ahead and film that presentation so we could make it available for others to watch it as?
I believe we could probably make that happen, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, then we can put it on our website and people can watch it.
Mr., is it okay with Mr. Studer if we do that, you think?
Yes, sir. Not for primed hat, but I'm most positive.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if we could. Mr. Mills, thank you very much for using your friendship to father our community. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Mr. Suggs, are we ready for this next presentation?
I believe we are, sir. Mr. Powell, you ready? Mr. Powell, if you would just give them a brief introduction to what we are fixing to watch here.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we took over animal control in 2014. Pretty much weren't sure of what we were, were doing when it was handed to us. I know we had a, a vision from Commissioner Lible in a, an area that he wanted to take this in, and then putting the, the staff in place to, to make part of this vision come true. So, we had to report numbers to, to the, you know, the state required us reporting numbers. And WFT in Gainesville went ahead and pulled reports from several surrounding counties and did a, a report on euthanasia rates in this region. And want to go ahead and show the, the new story on it and where we are now with our rates.
Florida law went into effect, requiring county animal shelters make it public record of how many animals are taken in, adopted, or put down. We spent the past three months following up on this data and requested public records from a dozen nearby counties. We found that some counties have made strides in bringing down their kill rates while others continue to struggle. Erica Spellman's new dog, Charlie, is one of about 1,800 dogs and cats that will be adopted from the Alachua County Animal Shelter this year.
I came in here the other day, and I saw him, and couldn't stop thinking about him, so I came back in and got him.
A 2013 Florida law requires county animal shelters to keep monthly records of how many animals they take in, adopt, and put down. During the past three months, we've collected this data from a dozen north-central Florida counties to find out just how many animals have been killed at county animal shelters, and which counties are keeping those numbers down. Our investigation found Marion County continues to have the highest kill rate, putting down more than 5,000 dogs and cats each year, more than half the animals they take in. That's compared to neighboring Alachua County, which only put down 268 animals last year, or 6% of its intakes. The average yearly kill rates for north-central Florida counties range from 1% to 54%.
You don't have room to keep 8,000 animals, 9,000 animals...
You don't have room to keep 8,000 animals, 9,000 animals a year. There's no room. There never will be. And unfortunately, some of those decisions have to be made.
We found rural counties tend to have higher kill rates because of fewer resources. But three small counties, Columbia, Swanee, and Putnam, have made large strides recent years in reducing those numbers.
This is a little bit more capacity than what we have here.
Tom Barrett runs Columbia County Animal Services. Despite limited space and funding compared to larger counties, he refused to let the thousands of animals that came in last year to simply be put down.
That would mean 3,600 dogs and cats would have been killed last year. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that. I'll find a way.
Columbia County has seen a 75% drop in euthanizations since 2014.
This is our adoption kennels.
Ending last year with a 23% kill rate. Barrett says that's thanks to keeping stray animal populations down in the area and?
Spay, neuter, spay, neuter, spay, neuter.
In Putnam County, kill rates are at an all-time low.
We have to have these listed within 48 hours.
Since Kevin Powell and his staff took over animal control from the Sheriff's Office in 2015, their kill rate has gone from more than 25% to only 1% last year, euthanizing just 17 animals. He attributes the success to private rescue shelters that take many of the animals.
Various rescues that are out there, you know, being a no-kill shelter, they're willing to help us out.
In Swanee County, the kill rates are also down. The county shelter has only put 19 animals down since September. Before that, the shelter had a kill rate of more than 30%, but that's when Megan Hale was hired as an animal control officer. In just eight months, she's helped save countless lives.
I decided to start using rescues. So, I reached out, I contacted several rescues.
Megan recently enlisted the help of Dr. Julie Levy, a professor at UF's College of Veterinary Medicine.
A great example is Swanee County, which is a very small rural shelter with just a few staff. But they've pulled together volunteers from the community, local veterinarians, and their life-saving has skyrocketed this year.
And now, Marion County is also asking for her help.
I'm hoping Dr. Levy has those answers. She's going to be sending people down. They're going to spend days here and watch our operations and see if there's something we can do to fix those numbers.
While this problem may have a lot to do with cats and dogs, officials say it's a much larger issue.
Is it the county's problem? No. It's a people problem. That's what this is.
The only county to not fulfill our records request was Dixie. Officials there say they do not adopt out animals, so any animal brought in is either picked up by its owner or euthanized. Lafayette County says they haven't had an animal control in service in several years.
Wow. Moving. Yes. Commissioner Lible?
Spay, neuter, spay, neuter, spay, neuter. But no, thank you. Wow. And you guys, y'all supported this effort, our animal shelter, Kevin, your staff. I know it was dropped in your lap, but you've done a wonderful job picking up the pieces. And you've gone, obviously, way beyond what expectations were. And I have to thank you. We appreciate it. This board.
I, I, I really thank the support of this commission. I know Commissioner Lible had a vision. We've met part of that vision. I know another part of his vision is an animal control shelter. And the support of this commission for this animal control shelter is, is going to be a really good thing for Putnam County. You know, our staff out there has done a phenomenal job bringing the animals in, how they do the intake, and the, preventing the spread of, of diseases to the animals that would increase the rate of euthanasia. Are working with the various rescues that are willing to go ahead and take animals from us. The donations we get, University of Florida, Dr. Hanson and Dr. Isa, they have been a tremendous partner in our, our, our shelter. They bring the students over. They do the free checks on animals. We also send our dogs and cats over to University of Florida for spay and neuter, which is free of charge, this by being a, a no-kill shelter. We also get support from Doc Tony, Jen from Pitt Sisters and the Tails Program. First Coast No More Homeless Pets is another big partner in ours. As a matter of fact, First Coast No More Homeless Pets has donated three pallets of food to us, which is roughly 4,500 pounds of food. Now, we go back years ago when we had to beg, borrow, and do whatever we had to do to get food. Now, we're in a position that, where do we store it? So, these are organizations that are willing to work with us. University of Florida came in yesterday to the shelter and put on a class for the shelter staff on compassion fatigue. It's, it's a, it's a real serious problem. You know, the, having to move the animals through there, the fatigue that they do, the constant beratement and, and the social media that they receive. So, University of Florida came in and, and talked to them about that and resources that we have available for them to, to help with their situations. So, I think we, we've come a long way from our, our first mega adoption in 2016 in Jacksonville to where we are today. And I really want to thank this commission for the support and our staff out at Animal Control for what they do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
I was going to say, we want to thank you and your staff. Go ahead, Mr. Lible.
And I'd like to recognize Lisa Suarez, if you would please stand. Since Lisa got assigned double duty from codes enforcement and animal services, she's not only recognized today, but one of our hardest workers and all our staff. And really, a lot of the credit goes to you organizing these rescue groups Kevin speaks of. Our staff do not get paid most often to meet them and coordinate these kind of pickups, Saturdays, Sundays, national state holidays. They're very dedicated. I can't say enough to thank you, Lisa, and, and your whole staff. They know who they are and thank you for a great job. Not a good job, a great job done. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And I, and I too want to, to thank Lisa. She, she has been a large part of where we are today at the vision of you, Commissioner Lible.
I want any credit. That girl's, she's the person.
Right. Taking that vision and, and moving it forward in this commission with the vision of the animal control facility. I thank you for that, getting the funding and, and starting to move the process forward with this animal control shelter. I know the animal control staff, Lisa, myself, we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, we'll move to public comment. And I'm going to start with Dr. Surrancey. You name your address in three minutes.
David, tomorrow was Blue Jeans Day, Dr. Surrancey.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. That doesn't count in my three minutes, does it?
Mr. Castleberry has a later appointment. We'll slide through this.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
It's, it's nice that you have a good attorney now.
It is, isn't it? Mr. Castleberry, you better defend yourself.
I'm quieting about Mr. Castleberry. I'll shut up now.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, Mr. County Administrator and your staff, thank you for having us today. I'm joined by, as a matter of fact, I'm Rick Surrancey Superintendent of Schools. I reside at 6,003 East Fourth Manor in Palacka. And I'm joined by three of our five school board members, David Buckles, Sandy Goyard, and Kathy Jorgensen. So, thank you for having us here. Just like to take a minute and thank all of you for what you're doing for our county as you face many of the same challenges we face, especially your budgetary challenges. Secondly, I want to appreciate your close working relationship with the Putnam County School Board as we both work together to improve our graduation rates, our student achievement, and most importantly, our, keeping our students safe. I'd like to respectfully comment on the letter I received regarding your intent to withdraw the $200,000 paramutual funds from the school district. Paramutual wagering was first authorized in the state of Florida in 1931. The 67 counties all receive an equal amount, which is maxed out at $446,500. As a school district, we have been blessed that the county has shared the funds with the school district for at least the last 30 years. The Florida Paramutual Wagering Act pursuant to Chapter 550 Florida statutes allows school districts to participate, and currently, the vast majority of counties share with the school districts. As a school district, we are limited in the amount of funds we receive. Most money comes from the state and has been dismal at best over the last several years. Then, a large portion comes from local taxes. We lack the ability to raise additional millage over the required local effort set by the legislature without going before the general public for a vote in the general election, which we tried in the past and have been unsuccessful. Our other voter allowed alternative is to ask for a penny or half penny sales tax. But the county has a penny discretionary sales tax you've had in place since 2002 that the school district is not a party to. This has brought in over $60 million to the county's Better Place Plan, but it limits our ability to raise taxes, to raise sales tax funds. Only 12 counties have higher sales taxes than Putnam, and we are at the norm at 7% where 45 counties are currently at with the general sales tax rate. Our budget has been pounded over the past several years. Our retirement rate increased this year, and we didn't receive enough funds to cover that increased cost. We have cut tremendously over the past year, and there's not a whole lot of places left to trim. 80 to 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits, and the loss of the $200,000 paramutual funds could equate, could equate to us losing four teaching positions or eight classified positions. And this is something we do not want to do. I respectfully ask that you consider keeping the school district whole. And if you must cut, look to other areas. Please make a choice that is best for the students and staff of Putnam County and include this transfer in your 2018-19 budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Uh-uh. Thank you. We, we are going into budget negotiations now.
Very good. Well, thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to working with you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I say just, just a couple of things? It might be, I'm David Buckles, 650 Cedar Creek Road, Palacka, Florida. It might be to our mutual advantage to have Terry Suggs sit down with our superintendent and see if there are ways that we can work together so we don't reinvent different wheels for the same thing. We have categorical funds that we can use for certain things that we might not need, but it's because of the way the state funds it, it's how you get the money and what you can do. You may be in similar situations, and there may be ways that we can work together to, to do the things that we, we looked at doing back in 2002 with the Better Place Plan. And I don't know, I thought Kathy might say a few things, but I wrote at the request of that, of then-county commissioners. Chip, were you on the county commission in 2002?
I wasn't.
Okay. None of you guys were, but we wrote a vision plan for children, I did, and put it together with a lot of research. I recently brought it into the school board office, and I was initially under the impression the money would be bonded and everything would be done before the people that passed it died. But it's drug on for many years, and I understand it's, it's nice to be able to do certain projects as they come available. But I don't, I don't know. I, I think it can be, there are a lot of things that we can do together mutually that can save a lot. I know that I, I got our lobbyist hooked up with Chip and, and one of the former county commissioners, and now you've got Southern Strategies working for you guys helping you get money. And there's, we're, we're currently in a relationship with St. John's River State College that will be tremendously beneficial to this county and could help secure the future of us never losing that college to Putnam County. And it just makes good sense with all the things that we've done together, from the donation of the land to the senior centers, to the old Johnson School, to things that I could go on and on about. And Kathy, are you going to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll just, I could go on and on about the things we've done to mutually benefit the county, and it runs into the millions of dollars. But it was things that, that we needed for our kids as well. Every time you guys pave a road or you fix a road, you know, it, it may meet an emergency rescue vehicle getting to someone's house to save a child's parent, or, and it, that saves trauma at school. And all that was in that vision plan report. And if you want to see that again, we'll, Rick has a copy of the board members for reading, because we talked about everything from mental health structure to paving roads and certainly recreation, libraries, the whole nine yards. And I think it might, it might be beneficial if you could read it again. And it's not a pat on my back, but I had a lot of schoolteachers and educators at the time support the district, the Board of County Commissioners in the passage of the Better Place Plan, against my better judgment, because I didn't want to be seen as advocating for a tax increase, but I did it anyway. But we still can't survive without you guys. We, we need you. And so, Terry, if anything else, you and Rick can sit down sometime and see if we can beat our heads together. I appreciate that.
I will say just one sentence. It takes a village to raise our children, and our children are the future. And we do need your help.
Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lible?
This has been a brutal session, this previous session, and there are goals and objectives both our boards are trying to reach here. And it will take a dialogue way past public comment that we can do. So, I, this commissioner, I speak for myself, would love to have, start a dialogue in a workshop setting, and maybe we can go over some of these things, David. I wasn't an elected official then, but I was on the Better Place Plan Committee. Very familiar with it, familiar with your plan, and it could all use discussion. But we also have some goals, particularly lowering the county millage, that we're very serious about. And then after this session, you know, we feel that the obligation put on us, unfounded mandate to arm our schools or, you know, bring security to them, is a backbreaker. It's going to be tough. And so, it's going to take us having a very serious dialogue to, to come up with winning solutions for both our teams. But I welcome it. I do. Thank you.
I think you guys, you guys have the knowledge. I mean, I know each one of you very well, and I know you're all sharp guys, and you want what's best for our county, just like we do. But, you know, we kind of think in different boxes, but, you know, we do overlap, and where we can, we can utilize the same dollars, whether it's dollars we get that we could share, or dollars you get that we could, you could buy law enforcement, we could buy vehicles. We can figure out ways to do things that, but it needs to be done in a dialogue where you can sit down and really talk and have an attorney there and tell you what can be done.
And David, and all of you board, school board members, I said a brutal session. Leo Wilkerson's in the back of the room staring a hole through me from Representative Payne's office. But that office and Southern Strategies and our local effort in the legislature was excellent. These are all post-shooting events in South Florida that really turned us upside down. I want to clarify that.
Yes.
And we're going to have to deal with it.
Bobby's, Bobby's got to get better every year. He just, you know, it's, it, every, every day, he's getting stronger with.
That's exactly right.
So, we're going to be very fortunate.
Okay.
Well, we look forward to the dialogue, and Mr. Suggs, I'll look forward to meeting with you.
Absolutely, ma'am. My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Keep getting Chip and Buddy Goddard mixed up.
I'm the one that has no hair. All right. Ms. Nancy Taylor?
We, we need to get Mr. Castleberry up.
Okay. Yes. Yes, sir. Hold up just a second here, and we'll have Mr. Castleberry come up.
Mr. Chairman, if you like, do you need a motion to pull that one item from the consent agenda if, because he is on the consent agenda? If you do, I will offer that motion that we pull.
And I'll second it.
We go ahead and pull Item P from the consent agenda.
Is there a vote on that?
Yeah. We got a vote.
All right.
All right. So, we've had a motion. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You had a motion in a second. We need a vote.
Okay. So, we have a first, we have a second. Do we have a vote?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. The Development Authority met in special session this morning. There, I was before you last month on the Development Authority bond offering for Seminole Electric. There was a slight change. It was originally going to be one hundred and twenty-five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Based on the market, they can sell the bonds at a premium, so it's going to be somewhat less than that. So the Development Authority had to do a new resolution that they passed this morning. It's basically changed it from one twenty-five, two fifty to up to one twenty-five, two fifty. There is a resolution in your packet for the Board of County Commissioners to do the same, and that's really the only change. Still no liability of the Development Authority or the county, so we're asking for that new resolution to make that one change.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of that resolution.
And I second it. Okay, so we have a first, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, now we will still continue with public comment, and we'll go with Nancy Taylor. Ms. Nancy, if, name, address, three minutes.
Nancy Taylor, 101 Oakwood, 32112. I'm speaking this morning on behalf of some concerned citizens regarding, regarding agenda items, I think it's eleven and twelve. There was a petition signed to the Board of County Commissioners, and it says, "Who can best cut our grass? We, the undersigned, are adamantly opposed to the proposed expansion of the road shoulder grass cutting county service. We demand the B O C C of Putnam County aggressively pursue contracting the entire service to private contractors. We contend this will save the county money and in keeping with the conservative principles of smaller government. Grass doesn't grow in winter. Why pay for this service when you don't need it?" So almost forty people have signed that. Now, this is a proposal from those concerned citizens. "We propose that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners make a substantial effort to determine the most efficient method of mowing the right-of-ways of the county's paved roads. There are currently two methods being discussed. One, perform in-house with county equipment and personnel. Two, contract the work to a private contractor. Both methods have been tried, but we don't see where a fair comparison has been made, and the effort to contract the work was abandoned too soon. We propose a pilot trial for both methods for a fair comparison. Select two similar sections of right-of-way and mow one section with in-house capability and contract the other. We understand there have been issues with the contracting of this service in the past. We encourage the county to work collaboratively with private contractors to develop a mutually beneficial contract. We believe it is important to remember that sometimes the benefits of contracting aren't immediately apparent, but competition over time provides the most efficient solution. We recommend, we recommend these pilot trials be conducted before decisions are made to fully implement the county's proposal to purchase equipment and hire personnel. Sincerely concerned citizens, and today I am representative of them." Now, this is my opinion. It's not that. This has not been signed. This is me. Appearance is important, and the appearance of this mowing deal is that some folks decided for one reason or another that the county should take on the job of roadside mowing. They discussed it and decided what nice new equipment they would need. They're not being funds budgeted for said equipment. They said they could amend the Better Place Plan to include the equipment purchases, and because there was an existing bid proposal, they could piggyback off of that and wouldn't even need to put the equipment out to bid. Put it on the agenda, and we're good to go. Done, deal. That is the appearance or perception of what transpired, and for the most part, it is accurate. But it looks like it was planned and a done deal because there has been no transparency. No one except those at the March twentieth workshop would even know about it. It's been five weeks, and those minutes have yet to be made public, and since the meeting was in a conference room, there is no video. Had it not been for a reporter from the Palaca Daily News, it would never have seen the light of day. So how does this look to your constituents? The appearance is that the Board of County Commissioners has decided to grow government and take on the arduous and costly task of mowing the county's hundreds of miles of roads at great expense of the county, including hiring of more personnel. Now, because I have talked to Mr. Pickens, who did get me a draft copy of those minutes that have not yet been published, and to Mr. Libel, I was told that economically, it was a better deal for the county, that they could do it for less money than contracting the job, and that it has been difficult to find a competent contractor. That information has not been mentioned. None of this is in the open, and the appearance that this was an idea that breezed through the process with no explanation of why is out there. When you spend over a quarter million dollars of money entrusted to you by your constituents, you need to say why. Appearance counts. Transparency is everything.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Ms. Taylor, are you going to, are you going to stick around while we discuss those two issues? Because if you don't leave, if you're not going to stay, then I'm going to say something now, but I'd really rather do it as part of the two agenda items. If you're going to stay, thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Judith York. There you are.
Good morning. Judith York, 142 Drayton Island Road. I have two issues I was to discuss. I'll, I'll piggyback right now on the tractor purchase, and I agree with it. I do think, now that I've been working with, with all of you for quite some time and going over our own issues on other topics, I see that this board right now is very thorough. There's a lot of baggage in the, in the past administration that you've had to deal with. You've had to go through some sloppy paperwork and records, and you have done a great job. You really have, and unfortunately, yes, some transparency hasn't been there. But I did look through your proposal. I saw it online, and I, now I kind of understand how, how you piggybacked with that type of program that you have. It looks like the, the pricing is very favorable for Putnam County, and in my past career in working with utilities, care custody and control was always the issue that as a, as a entity you want, and you can control your costs better than you can from a contractor. A lot of times contractors don't fulfill. They say they're going to do it, but you don't have certain controls over their employees where you do have with your own, and you can respond to more emergencies. And the equipment that you're purchasing, where you have the mowers and, and I believe the, the deck blades, will allow you to better serve this community where it needs to be. And it's a smaller piece of equipment. It can be transported much quicker than your graders, and again, you can control where you're sending people, and you can still subcontract some of your larger projects. So I really do think it's a good proposal for the, the county for, for that purchase on that, on that topic. So that finishes that. On the other issue, on, you have a proposal for the repairs on the landing. I have to commend Mike Nimitz has done a great job putting that together, and it looks like it's, it's being built out even better than what we thought for, to last for our five years that we need. I know the vendors are probably going to love it, because now they can, hopefully we can maybe even bring a septic tank over, and when the house building's doing, they can bring over their trailers and equipment more and not having to hand move things. But looking through the proposal, though, we had discussed before about the pilings that are needed for the new barge that is coming in July first, end of, end of June, and I don't see that on the proposal, and that's going to be an essential part of that repair. I do know there was one captain had commented, since January, we've commented about that, that there is a slight damage to, to the landing. We're not, we're not, I mean, to the slide, not to the top, and the, the slide is very, very important when they're bringing in that vessel. Just as recently, when we had a power outage from the big storm, and Clay Electric came over and served and turned some things on, and the crew and captain were operating that, their vessel and carrying that, the trucks over, and, Lord, that had to be fifteen miles an hour and better winds, and watching that barge come off the landing. The landing is so important, because as it slides out, and then all of a sudden the wind grabs it, you're either going up the river or going down the river. And when you see that as a, as a layman and from the side, you're like thinking to yourself, where are they going? And you've got a boat motor going full force, and, and everyone scrambling just to make sure that you're going in the right direction and that you don't somehow drift and go too close to shore and could possibly damage somebody's, you know, the Babett's dock or the other portions dock on the other side. It's, it, it's pretty scary, and I have to commend that crew and captain when they do it. So the extension that's, of the slide is going to be extremely important. It just needs to come out fifteen feet, and it has to match the barge that's going to be coming. And she's going to need it to be sliding out in order to get into the channel. At the same time, when you're dealing with coming into high winds, you need that extension so that as you're, as you're aiming for that area that you're coming in, and fifteen feet can make a, a big difference. So I do, I don't know if Mr. Nimitz's got a different proposal for that, for the, you know, piling requires maybe a different crew, but I don't see that, and of course, this is being all paid by the grant monies. So I'd just like to, as you go into maybe your transportation meeting, that does need to be addressed, because timing is of the essence to get those pilings in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Judith, I spoke with press about the project yesterday, and press, didn't you say that, that you were looking at putting those pilings in at a later date, if that would be possible on both sides? Okay.
The later date, though, being done by July first, when the new barge comes in? It can't be just pilings. It has to have, include the slide. Has to include the boards on the slide.
Can you come up and address that, press? Because I know we spoke about it, and I know we've talked about it in a transportation meeting, and I was aware that, that there was going to be an extension, that it needed to, you know, it needed to be done.
Judith, are you going to be at transportation this afternoon?
I can.
Okay, we can discuss it.
Or can we just discuss it then?
Yeah, we can discuss it there.
Okay.
That's okay, press.
That would give press time to look into what he need, you know, needs to see, and then we can just talk about it this afternoon at transportation workshop.
This is an item on the consent agenda, but what we're doing right now is basically maintenance and kind. We're trying to fix the landings. The timbers are pretty much gone. We're trying to do that, and what we're talking about doing is what other work we can do. We can do this work right now under our DOT grant and get it paid for and fixed to get another four to five years out of these landings. Once we get the barge in, then we're going to work with the barge captain and see exactly what we need to do if we have to add another piling or two for her to manage the barge. We can certainly do that. But we're having to do maintenance and kind right now, so we don't jeopardize the future DOT landings they're going to put in. So this is an interim. We understand that, but this will buy us the time to get the landings functional until the DOT rebuilds them. I believe it's either 2020 or 2021 they have that money scheduled. They have over four million dollars to rebuild both landings.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
In our past meetings, workshop meetings that we've had, the captain has brought that up, and even in the last meeting, when you approved the barge, she had stated at that point, you have to do the extension of the slides. It's imperative that you have in order for me to operate that vessel safely. And I don't think the county's going to want any liability if something does happen under high winds, especially emergency repairs, or Clay Electric coming open, and all of a sudden, you've got a barge running a little too close to somebody's dock and running into somebody else's boat and dock.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Zanny Best. Name, address, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mr. Zanny Best. I live at 200 Hayes Drive in Toilac, Florida. I'm a resident of Putnam County and have been and will be for the rest of my life. I suffer, and so many of us suffer, from people with mental illnesses in this county. I am a consumer advocate for people that don't know how to ask for, don't know where to go, or how to get services. It's so sorely needed. It's a blemish on our entire county. All we need at this point here, with all the work me and Mr. Sharp have done, has done, is a director for our center. We have the building, we have the okay from the city, the, the government, the state, rather. Everything is in order but a director. I'm here again today asking the, the commission, everybody in their respective places, to please help us find someone to get the doors open, to get the people out of the woods and into the street, into a place where you get out of the hospital, you have some place to go. You're not put back into the same environment that got you sick, or you're not put in jail for doing something. Jail is not the place for people with mental illnesses. We need help finding a director. We're this close, we can taste it. We don't know how to manage our lives. With the mental illness, people, regular people can't manage their lives. With a, with a psychiatric disability, you have no idea. They closed the hospitals twenty years ago. It cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to keep one patient in the hospital. They did the outpatient, pushed everybody out of hospitals into outpatient. Everybody's on outpatient now, it costs about forty, forty-five thousand dollars for outpatient and going back and forth to the doctor to get your medications. It's so complicated, mental illness is, denial is a big thing that we, that we work with. Most fascinating thing about mental illness is everyone else will know something is wrong with you but you, and then it takes you, after you figure out that there may be something wrong, then you go into that denial phase. That denial phase is about a year and a half, if you have good people around you, and most of us don't. We're put back out into the same society, same thing that got us sick, we go to jail. We need a clubhouse in Putnam County and Palaca. We have the building. We have the zoning codes and everything covered. All we need is a director to get the doors open. How to manage mental illness, just like any other illness or any, anything else in our, our society today, you have to manage it. If you don't know how, you walk around in circles, like the Israelites. They were given directions, they walked around the circle for forty years, and it was a, a, a week away from them. If they went, they had followed directions properly, it would took them a week. It took them forty years. Let us not, let us not take us forty years to get to where we, where we need to be. It's right here. We have the building, we have everything we need but a director. Please, Mr. Libel, and the rest of your commissioners in their, in their respective places, please give us the time that we need. Find us a director just to get the doors open, so we can get the help to the people that need them, need it. My next space on the agenda is the racial study groups. Thank you so much. Thank you so, so much. People are starting to talk about what's going on, what they think about other racial groups, other racial people. People of different colors, people that speak different languages. We're starting to talk. The police department is, you know, we have some engagements with them. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the study groups. They are important for our county to grow with the rest of the country. We are ahead of the country as far as this particular issue is concerned, I believe. We sit down, we talk about what goes on in a white person's mind, what goes on in a black person's mind, what goes on in a Chinese person's mind, what's your obstacles, what's my obstacles, what's her obstacles, what's his obstacles? Racial issues are so important with the growth of our country today. And thank you so much, whoever, Mr. Hill is the one, I, I, I put it all on his shoulders. He brought me to the racial group. It does work. I expect, I would ask everyone here to stop in one Monday or one Wednesday evening in Toilac and, or Palaca Monday. Stop into the racial study groups just to hear, you don't have to say anything, just to listen to people of other races so that you can see exactly what ground-rooted problems are or issues are in our community, so we can grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? CNN will close that portion, and we'll move to our consent agenda. Mr. Libel?
Let's catch up here. I'd like to pull item O.
I have none.
Mr. Harvey? I do. Item D and item N and O also. Thank you, Mr. Libel.
I would like to pull item F. What items did you pull, Mr.?
H, D, what? N and O, and Commissioner Libel wants to talk about O also.
Was that B or D?
D, as in dog.
Give us a minute, Mr. Chair.
Give us a minute, Mr. Chair.
You want to take them in order? I was, no. I don't know about as much in order. Yeah, let's go down here. Okay, so we have nothing, A, C is good. Okay, so we have no comments on A, B, and C. Let's move to D.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a real brief comment, and I want to thank our staff for this. This is properties that have been brought to the county or achieved, I'm not going to say that word right, sheeded to the county, I did get it, and abated. This board has took a bold step, and I really want to commend our board and let the citizens know, we don't want to be in the real estate business. These properties are going to be sent back out for sale. Some of these will be, you know, a way for us to abate costs, if you will, out of our general fund. So if someone wants to buy a piece of property that's in abatement, and they agree to abate the property and clean it up, it's a cost savings to the county, and we're not spending that taxpayer money on that. This is a huge step in the right direction. And Mr. Suggs and Mr. Manning and Ms. Papel, all of our staff with the direction of the county commissioners, has really took a big bite out of the apple. You'll start seeing for sale signs that are approved by the Board of County Commissioners to be placed on these properties, and get this money back into the general fund without costing the citizens of Putnam County hardly anything. And we appreciate that. So I just wanted to commend our staff and our board for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any comments on E or F?
Yeah, I pulled the F, yes, sir. Commissioners on item F, the, it's the ship program. When Mr. Teeples came before us at an earlier date, he had recommended a shorter period of time for the loan payback to be finished up. When this came before us the other, the other day, I read it, and if you'll look on page 57 of your agenda, it basically says that it's still at a, at 20-year. The, with, basically, it's 30% after seven years, and then it's 5% through 19th year, remaining 10% forgiven at the end of the 20-year loan. I, I recommend what Mr. Teeples recommends, which is that we back it up to the same 30% over five years, and then 10% a year. So it'd be 30 for another seven years until it's done. So basically, it would move it to 12 years instead of 20 years. So 30% after five years, and then 10% a year for the following seven years, instead of 5%.
Commissioner Turner, Mr. Chairman, if I can?
Yes, sir.
I've asked Mr. Teeples if he would come to the podium and give us just a quick overview of the changes in this program, including the explanation of your request. And it was a lot of stuff to read through, and if you're not a mortgage specialist, it was kind of difficult. But Mr. Teeples had a way of, of getting it simple for us, and that's what we need, sir. Thank you.
Because I have a simple mind, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brian Teeples, Northeast Florida Regional Council. In your package, you will see a memorandum from me transmitting the changes to your local housing assistance plan. I'll go through these with you. Please, if you're going to follow along, look at the straight through and underline version, because that is the pages that are referenced. They change somewhat when you make the clean copy, which is right behind it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'm, do we need to go through it line item by line item, every page? I mean, I actually read it.
Your second page in, we, we all did. But I just, it would be good. There's a short list right there.
Okay, that's fine. I'll do whatever y'all want to do. I just want to make sure that Mr. Teeples doesn't think we want him to read every page from front to back of the whole document.
No, 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 a quick highlight, just a review.
Thank you.
On page six, you will notice that there's a clarification of the definition of essential personnel, which really brackets the income limits between 80 and 120% of area median income. That's the change on that page. On page seven, there is a increase in the maximum award from $15,000 to $34,500.
Mr. Teeples, we, our pages are not numbered like yours are.
Yeah, they are right. On the right-hand side, sir.
On the right, a little higher.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Yeah. And he's going right down that list.
Go ahead.
Second page in, Larry.
I got it now.
See that little tiny print?
I'm sorry, I didn't print your stuff. I brought my own in.
That's fine.
I apologize. Again, page seven, under the disaster relief strategy, increasing the maximum amount of award from $15,000 to $34,500, and adding that money spent under $5,000 would be administered as a grant and, and not a forgivable loan. And it was thought that the small amount of money to administer as a loan just didn't make a whole lot of sense.
Okay.
If you move on down to page 10, again, we have added that contracts involving only closing costs up to $3,500, again, would be administered as a grant. Again, it wasn't thought that that amount of money was worthwhile amortizing over any period of time. Clarify the definition again of essential service personnel, and then move some paragraphs around, so you don't get confused. It confused me for a long time, but just to let you know, we moved some paragraphs around. On page 10s and 11, bottom of 10, top of 11, clarifies heirs and successors' ability to, eligibility and repayment procedures. It wasn't clear before. But again, now it makes it clear that the heirs have to meet the same criteria, and provides for payback and a process to delay payment to the county at the request of the heir. If you move on to page 12, again, that same change in the heirs and successors' language. Page 13 eliminates references to the Green Initiative, which doesn't exist as I understand it any longer. And then pages, sorry, page 14, again, provides that in the emergency repair strategy, that contracts under $5,000, again, be administered as a grant, and not amortize that as a forgivable loan. And then finally, 16 and 17, which are required statements within your L-HAP, change some of the information in there. It really doesn't affect strategies or anything along those lines. It was just update to that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
I have one, Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Teeples, the Green Initiative, did that simply just add burdensome expense to the, why did they drop it?
You know, I, I don't know. And it's been, it's been in the plan for as long as I can remember, but it hasn't really been a program for a long time. And I think we just finally recognized that it wasn't out there anymore.
I see.
And, and took it out. I, I don't know the history, and I apologize.
It has faded, I agree. I know, you don't hear it anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. No, that was great. That's all I needed.
Mr. Teeples, if I may, Mr. Chair, last time you were here, you mentioned that it would be better to try to go back to a 10- or 12-year payback on the loan, and that would perhaps be part of the presentation that you made to us at this time. Have you changed your mind on that, or have you just, did it just not get included?
I wanted to, without consensus from the commission, I want to bring to you what the, your Affordable Housing Committee had presented to you, and I assumed that we would have that discussion at this point in time, Commissioner. No, I, I haven't changed my mind. Again, the, the philosophy and the purpose behind an amortization and a payback is to keep people from getting ship money, and then simply flipping the property and getting a higher price for it. 20 years is on the high side. Most amortization paybacks run in the 15-year kind of a range oftentimes. And so 20 years is, is pretty aggressive, and, and I don't think it would be a problem. And I don't think it would really put the county in any kind of worse position to, to, to back that off a little bit. You know, anything above 10 years, you've probably got your money out of what you've helped the individual with, and, you know, circumstances change. You know, we, we're a fluid society, and, you know, we tend to sometimes move someplace.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the ship program was, is, has always been intended to be more of a hand up than a hand out.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the, I think that during the application process, as well as a 12-year payback term with 30% on five-year and 10% on the next seven years, would keep the flippers out, or the, what he was just referring to, between the application process and the 12-year time period. What happens is, is a lot of the time, it seems to me, in the ship program, the, the applicants 15 years from now end up having to pay back just a little bit of the loan. And if they bought the thing during a high, in a high market or whatever, we actually have to give the money back, because there's no money left to give back. We just did it last time he came, I think. So, you know, I would, I would highly recommend that we be compassionate about this, and we try to, to recognize this program for what it actually is, is a helping hand, and, and not make it so critical. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we accept all the changes that Mr. Teeples has recommended to us today, as well as changing the payback period to a 12-year period, 30% after five years, and then 10% a year for the next seven years.
I'll second it.
Okay, okay. Proper first, proper second. All those in favor?
Aye. Do you have some more discussion, Mr. Teeples?
I, I just had a question for clarification. There is the 20-year amortization, both in the home purchase strategy, as well as rehabilitation strategy. And I just was wondering whether your motion covered both of those strategies, because they both currently have
It was my intention for it to cover both, Mr. Teeples.
Just want to make sure, so when I make the changes, I get it right.
I'm good with my second.
I'm good with my vote, Mr. Pickens.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, could I ask, was, was this discussed at all in the committee when they recommended these changes, or no?
I don't know, Kevin Powell's here. I don't remember discussing that. No. There was a number of other strategies and ideas kicked about. I think it was a pretty robust discussion, to be honest with you, but that, that was not discussed. I, I do have a further question, Mr. Chairman. Attached to the plan is Exhibit E, which is a required resolution. And I guess my question, maybe through the county attorney, does there need to be a separate vote taken? It's a required resolution by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation as an attachment.
No, it's all part of the, the agenda item, and includes the, the resolution.
Okay.
However, I would note that we're going to have to go through and make, if you all vote for those changes in the L-HAP, we'll have to make some changes in the document itself before, before it, it goes out. But those changes will be consistent with whatever the vote is here today?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we still have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion moves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teeples.
Sir, thank you.
Okay. We'll move to item G, and I don't think any of my commissioners pulled that one, but I did want to have Mr. Quinn Romei come up and explain our intent on this purchase.
You're pulling G?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just for discussion.
Good morning. Quinn Romei, Chief Fire and EMS. What this is, is a replacement ambulance, as we've been doing over the last many years. This, the ambulances that we're getting are, in my opinion, and what we're actually seeing on the ground, the longevity of the boxes are, they have a lifetime warranty on them. Basically, what we're doing is putting in to place the vehicles that we can start rechassis, and once we get to the point of having all of the units that we need to be able to start that program. And as, I'm sure y'all are aware, and I know Mr. Lightman probably is, with the rechassis, you're talking a much, much cheaper thing, because you're using the same box, refurbishing it, and putting a brand-new chassis on it, and you have a new truck. So this is just another one of those final ones we need to get, get that program in place. We cover over 800 square miles. We've got eight units. And many of those miles are not on paved roads, and not necessarily on a road in, in some cases. So what we have found, we've tried every unit, brand, Chevrolet, Ford, Dodge, you name it, since, since we've been here. And with the Freightliners, we're seeing the ability to not only overcome some of the, those challenges, but we, here in Putnam County, everybody knows, we've got one hospital. Hospital does a great job, but some of the, the acute care that is necessary, we have to go outside to either Gainesville, Daytona, Jacksonville. And putting those type miles on, on the truck, you have to have a vehicle that's, that, that can mix and match. And also with the, the amount of area that we have to cover, we have to have an ambulance where we're basically bringing the emergency room to the patient. We're not fortunate enough to have an ambulance like many of ours around, the hospital, like many of ours around the county is on, you know, many street corners. So we have one. And going from Crescent City to, to Palacka is, you know, roughly 30 miles, just one way. So as I have said many, many, many times, I would put our EMS personnel high, highly above any of the others in the state, because what we have to do on a daily basis, we've got to be on our A-game, and with the equipment that we're, we're asking for.
Okay. And I, and you didn't go to it, but the reason you went to the Braun is because that is a common, that's, that's the common box that we can get now. The other ones are being discontinued. So the, the parts for this thing are very accessible. And also, what I've talked to other staff, we could probably move this box three or four times to different units as the, as the chassis themselves just basically wore out.
Yeah. And like I mentioned, we've looked at a number of different type vehicles at different vendors. Braun is one of the vendors that makes their box to be rechastened. You may or may not know, in, in many of the older units that we have, there's a marine-grade plywood floor in, in the floor itself. We've actually had stretchers go in and hit the pothole where the, you know, it's just worn out. And then you've got to take the whole truck apart, and that is a routine-type thing. So with this, this type box, it's a all-metal box, and it eliminates some of those things that we've, we've traditionally had issues with.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, H, any questions?
No.
Let's move to, just dropped it in. Okay, we have none on I, J, K, L, M, so let's move to N.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tompkins, could I ask you really quick, and I'm going to, I want you to fly at a very high altitude on this one. Since I've been here, it almost seems, we can't seem to get out of this project for some reason. So tell me really quickly, it seems like for the past four years that I've here, we've dealt with this over and over and over. So really quickly, how can we get out of this thing?
This, this gets us out of it. DOT finally recognized that it was a DOT problem. The actual pipe was not in there easement, it actually went under a gentleman's trailer. DOT then allocated $475,000 of a SCOP grant.
Good.
And what we're doing, and the next item O, is, is a sister to this. We've worked out an arrangement with the gentleman that owns the property. We're actually going to buy his property from him. He's going to relocate himself to another piece of property that he already has under contract. So therefore, we eliminate that problem. We will then take title to the entire lot, and we have additional monies left over in the SCOP grant to recreate or fix the drainage problem that's there. So this gets us out of it once and for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Might as well stay there.
Yeah.
Pull the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I can, Mr. Chair. It was only to commend you and your department on the procurement agreement with this family, in lieu of intimate domain, which is very ugly at times. This was done proper. The solution, it will end this merry-go-round we've been on, and the Welland family is very happy with this arrangement. happy with this arrangement. And thank you, Press, you put together a great deal here.
Thank you. It was a lot of hard work on everybody's part.
Yeah.
A lot of work on my staff's part and I want to commend them for it. But I believe this is the right way that we've done it and it's, it's benefits everybody.
Well, the Welland family is very happy.
Good. I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we can get to our pipe now.
Mr. Chairman, we've been through the consent agenda. I make a motion, we approve items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have proper first, proper second on the agenda items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unanimous. All right. Now we get to move to item twelve.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a request at this point? I would like to talk about item thirteen first because until we know what we're going to do with thirteen, twelve doesn't matter.
Yes, sir. I have no problem with that.
I don't know why we got them backwards.
I guess it's my day in the pickle barrel.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, item thirteen is, Mr. Turner is exactly right. We're asking for approval of two additional component tractors. Um, these were purchased, our proposal came off with the Florida Sheriff's contract, which we are a member of. These were competitively bid by the Florida Sheriff's Association and Florida Association of Counties. These two tractors, now, let me back up a little bit. We, as Quinnra May said, we, we got over eight hundred and fifty square miles in this county. I have three tractors that do mowing. I have three tractors that do ditch mowing and boom mowing, which is vertically clearing the sides of the right of way. So we have six tractors covering this entire county. Right now to do the mowing, we, and we try to do it four times a year, to do that mowing, we're on a eight to ten week cycle. If we don't have any hiccups, we don't have a week of bad weather, if we have a lot of rain. Last year, the rain killed us. We were, we couldn't get one road mowed that we'd have to start over again. We have existing three ten-foot back wing mowers. We have to make two passes on each side of the road to get it properly mowed. With, and item, with the fifteen footers, we can make one pass and do it properly. And we, you know, we have the boom mowers to come in and hit the back sides of the ditches and the bottom of the ditches. These two tractors will increase our efficiency tremendously. And we're trying to get to a level of service that, for the residents, that's acceptable. We're not trying to grow government. I mean, and, and I've said this publicly and I'll say it again, we have a skeleton staff right now. You go in my parking lot right now and you'll see six private vehicles of my employees that come to work at this facility. I have another facility in the western part of county, one in the south part of county, same thing, two or three vehicles. We're on skeleton staffs right now, trying to do the best we can do to meet the level of service that the residents and the commissioners want us to do. And it is very difficult. Uh, and, uh, we had a situation come up. We had a grader operator spent out for three weeks sick and that put a kink in our motor grading, you know. Thank God he came back to work this week and we're trying to get caught back up. Same thing with the graders. I got seven graders for, you know, eight, nine hundred miles of road in the county. And it was same thing, we're on an eight to ten week cycle on those things. And, you know, we're doing our best with it, but we, we need the equipment to do the job you want us to do. And we're asking for these additional equipment so we can do that job. And I think we can do a lot better job if we have more equipment and we can cover the area quicker, faster, and get the jobs done that we need to do. And that's why we're asking for this equipment. Yes, we're asking for two more employees to run this equipment. Um, I'll be very candid with the board. I wasn't here when we took mowing in-house. What they did was they took six of my employees, designated them to the mowing operation and did not replace them. So I'm, I'm down two labor crews that went to mowing crews. Now, the labor crews are just as important as the mowing, as we have culverts replaced, ditches to clean, other work needs to be done, head walls to be built, you know, we've got a lot of drainage work needs to be done. That's why I asked for additional employees to be able to run this equipment and not deplete my existing labor force right now. And, you know, we've done the analysis with it. Um, I know there's been several questions about is it cheaper to go in-house or contracted out? And I'll make one statement. We are in it for the county to, for customer service. We're in it to make sure we get it done to level of service that residents require. Contractors are in it to make money. If they can get by with a half a pass or if they can go down that road forty miles an hour and cut it, they're going to do it. And I talked to several of my supervisors that were here when we had it contracted out. They spent a tremendous amount of time going behind the contractor, making sure he was doing what he was supposed to do, when he wasn't doing it, why he wasn't doing it, and spending so much time just following with the contractor, trying to make him do the job he was supposed to do. And so, you know, that's why we're asking for this equipment. I can refer to Mr. Reynolds over there. He has done, uh, a cost analysis on it. We still feel like it is comparable to do it in-house. My employees right now, when they're not mowing, they're doing other work for the county. They're either on a labor crew or running some other type of equipment, but they work a forty hour week, whether they're mowing roadside ditches or boom mowing or laying culverts, they work forty hours a week. So I would respectfully request the board's approval to buy this equipment to help us get to the level of service we need to be at.
Okay. Well, I'm surprised you didn't bring up how you'd been beaten up by every commissioner up here on making sure that this cost was, you know, in, in the, in the right aspect.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any account, comments here for Press?
I do. I do. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. I, I support a pilot program, as you well know. My, uh, the area that I represent, I, we represent all of Putnam County. But the MSB roads don't have the same problems that the other roads have. They're under contract by private contractors who grade those roads and who mow those roads. So, um, I don't have the same issues out in some of the area, um, that other, other commissioners do. And I do applaud Commissioner, uh, Turner for bringing, thinking out of the box and bringing this to us. So I support a pilot program. I'd like to see that before we enter into major purchases of a lot of equipment. But here's a, here's a thought. Right now on Fridays, those tractors that you just referred to are sitting idle. And if those could be put to work, then possibly we might could buy maybe a tractor. But we could do that. Again, West Putnam is not going to benefit from this because of the, the many, many roads. And when you talk about nine hundred and something miles of dirt roads, West Putnam is the, probably one of the biggest ones you've got. My other concern is where are you going to get the employees? See, we were told, and I was against it then, about buying this equipment and taking it out of the private sector, that we had employees that would easily migrate over and it wasn't going to be an issue. But that's not true. That's not what happened here. And you're saying you're still short two crews because they migrated over. Well, that was the decision of the Public Works Director at that time. That, again, that doesn't seem to be truthful. The other thing I've noticed, and I've followed around behind some of the mowers, that at least out in some of my areas, okay? I didn't go down to the south end, I'll tell you that. But at least out in West Putnam and Palaka proper, if you will, most of the people are maintaining their ditches and the ditches in front of their house on their own. So a ten, a fifteen foot back wing is still going to be up. You're only going to use one half of that because it's not necessary. I measured some areas, I mean, I really took my tape measure out. By the time they get done weed eating around the sign, by the time the zero turns come down the road, there ain't a whole lot left to cut. Even if there is something to cut, there's not a whole lot left. So I'd like for you to address that because I think that's going to not be beneficial for this area. And the other thing I want to talk about, I do have a legitimate concern that we're growing government. And my thought and my, my mantra has always been that the private sector can do a better job. I would love to see our government be more privatized than anything. There's private people out there. You weren't here when those mowing contractors were here, but a lot of it, they were set up to fail. And they were promised, they were, I mean, hang on just a minute. They were promised certain amount of cuts a year. Well, you build your profit into those cuts. And then they were saying, no, don't do number four cut, or don't do all of number three cut. Well, that's not fair to someone who goes out, a business owner, who has that lump in their throat to meet payroll, who hires employees, who goes out and buys the equipment on the good faith that they're going to have a contract that they can fulfill, and then all of a sudden that's taken away from them or parts of it. You know, that fourth contract very well might be the profit for the entire year. And we all live with contracts. Even in my business, I live with contract. And changing those things midstream caused me great concern, almost financial ruin at times. So I'm just going to say, there was some mix-ups there. Had they been allowed to mow in the proper fashion that they were supposed to, it would have been fine. And yeah, there was some problems where they had to go back and re-mow certain areas. But that's, that's with everything. We, we deal with that all the time. So those are my concerns. But again, I want to emphasize that I really think a pilot program, and I think Friday access, and if you can find employees Friday and Saturday that could go out and do this, might be beneficial. So if you'll respond to those things.
First of all, I, I wasn't here when all this, excuse me, Commissioner.
Commissioner, would you like him to respond to you at this time or to respond to all of us at one time?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So do you mind if I, if I, I mean, I don't want to get on, get on your bad side here.
No, 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 no. I yield the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Instead of all, I mean, he may want to just respond to all our questions at one time because some of them may offset one another.
Yeah, I yield the floor, so, Mr. Turn-
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
I'd like to start out by saying, um, a lot of the information that's been going around and the numbers that have been used and the different things in social media and even in some of our workshops and what have you, at very best are just not accurate. Um, the, some of the areas in the county, I agree, don't need a, a tractor and back wing mower on it. But, and they could probably, some roads are, are already being mowed with zero turns only because there is no room. And maybe that was one of the roads that my colleague went out and looked at that, that may not have a mower on it right now. Anyhow, I don't really know, but, um, if I could, I'd like to go back with a little bit of history on this that I've been digging up. Because I have caught me some, um, heat over this issue, to say the least, Ms. Taylor. To say the least, I've caught some heat on this issue. So I'd like to try to answer some of these questions if I could. The right of way mowing was bid in two thousand and fourteen and it was given to, to Florida Erosion Barriers. That's who got the job. They had, they bid it for fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars per root with four roots that year to be done. So they, they contracted with them for four roots. They paid, or four passes, whatever you want to call it. The contractor the first year was only paid ninety-three thousand. Excuse me. It wasn't because the county didn't ask him to do the rest, it was because he didn't perform. And so the grass around here was a jungle on the sides of the road. Now, I understand in, in your part of the, in the county in West Putnam, it's not the same as it is in East Palakis, San Mateo, and South Putnam and a lot of the other areas. We don't have MSBU's. We don't have MSBU contractors. Somebody's got to mow our grass other than them. So, um, the, after two years of him not performing, they fired him, whoever he was. Whoever owns Florida Erosion Barriers, his contract was terminated. So at that time, the county had no option other than go out for another bid. I'll be the first to admit that maybe that bid wasn't exactly correct. I'll be the first to admit that. But that's what was bid and it came in at ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars for one pass, which that made it three hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars to mow the grass. They bid it out again in zones. They got no bids in zones. So their only option at that point, and I'm, was to go buy a lawnmower and the five commissioners go out and start mowing the grass or go bring it in-house because, or pay three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars a year. So they went out in January of two thousand and fifteen, they went out and they bought two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars worth of mowing equipment. That included the zero turns, the, the three tractors. That included the mowing decks, the trailers, the six scag mowers and, and, but it did not include the lease that they had on the three boom mowers that was fifty-two, eight more. So basically it was two ninety-nine, three eighty-nine with the lease, three hundred thousand dollars. Now, I've been hearing the numbers bandied all around that it is costing us five hundred thousand dollars a year to mow the grass. That's not an accurate statement. So, um, so what we did was we went and bought three hundred thousand dollars, counting the equipment, or basically two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment and leased a little bit more. And we mowed, we mowed the grass for two years previous to now. And now, for that amount of money, no additional labor because they didn't give him any more labor. And so basically for that diesel fuel and those, and the equipment, we've mowed the grass for two years. Now, I want it to be perfectly known that I'm a champion of trading local. I'm a champion of privatizing everything we can. But I'm also a champion of being physically conservative and not blowing a million dollars of the county's money because we want to send it out on the street. And the difference is in the, if we mow the grass with the equipment we have right now, even if, even with, before we buy this, but we, we will have, we would have spent one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and, and ninety-seven dollars is what we would have spent over the three-year period to mow this grass under the contract amount that was bid. Which is eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars more money than what, than, than what today, than, uh, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, ninety-seven dollars more money than if we'd have, than if the commissioners had have sent this out to, to bid three years ago. Now, like I said, I welcome the conversation that we have sometime in the future about seeing if we can figure out a way to make the bid procedure better, the bid procedure more efficient, to meet with local contractors and try to find out what prevented them from bidding this last time around. I'm willing to have that conversation. I'd be tickled to death to have it. Because if we could figure out a way to get this outside, I'd be first in line to do it, but not at the cost of costing the county eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars over a three-year term. Now, people say all the time, I hear it all the time, especially if they live in a condo at High Woffa, county doesn't have a mowing problem. Well, they have. They've had a mowing problem for about five years now. They've had a mowing problem, four for sure. The two years that the contractor was out there and he didn't perform, and the last two years, we've had a mowing problem because we didn't, the commissioners didn't give public service enough equipment to do the job at the level that they would expect a contractor to do it at. And we still got a problem this year. It's coming because I'm telling you right now, the, the roads last year, all down in South Putnam, were waist-high. They looked like a jungle. So I'm just telling you that if we, we, we are in the mowing business this year. I am absolutely with Commissioner Harvey is if we can figure out a way to get this and be, be responsible, fiduciarily responsible and get this- fiduciarily responsible and get this privatized, I'll be on the bandwagon. But eight hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars over a period of three years is not physically responsible. So we've got to do something here to move this out of house at some point. But right now, we can't. We've got to do, we've got to mow these roads and get to some level of customer service. So also, be, another thing that the extra two tractors or four, instead of just mowers, is also that we can take those and use them for dual equipment. Because what hasn't been mentioned here, yeah, they might sit around on Friday. And I'm also with, with my esteemed colleague here that, that if they could figure out a way to make them run six days a week, I'd be for that too, if we, if it was absolutely necessary. But, um, what we haven't talked about is they sit all winter. Because when, right now, the only thing they do is mow grass and then they sit around. That's why, as part of this deal that I've requested, that we have leveling blades. That way, when we have a rain event, we can go build roads with these things. We can put five of these tractors and five of these blades on roads after a rain event, and we'll fix them in a week. And all that you get for the bargain price of about a hundred grand less than one road grader, one road grader. So you're going to have five pieces of equipment that is dual equipment instead of five single-use pieces of equipment, if we buy the two new tractors today. And then you're going to be able to go do roads with them. So a big rain event, instead of just waiting until the road graders can get to it, or the grade all can go out there, or whatever the case may be, you can actually hook those leveling blades to it, go out for a week, and you got five extra pieces of equipment helping with roads. And yeah, your mo- roads won't be mowed, but we had a major rain event. So next, next week, we go back to mowing roads and we got five mowers to keep up with it. Five fifteen-foot mowers, which is what we need on a lot of the roads. Another thing I agree with, with Commissioner Harvey is that we don't need a fifteen-footer on every road. But the multitude of the roads, we do. And so if you can take two-thirds of your roads that you need fifteen footers on and you only have to make one pass, you've just saved the time to make the second pass on every one of them roads, plus the fuel and the labor and everything else. The last thing that I would like to mention is, if I could, is yes, they asked for sixty-nine, let me find it, here it is. They asked for sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars for additional labor, but that's for next year. So this is going to be absorbed into his budget next year. This year, he's got five people that he hasn't been able to hire. I get it. So he's got the labor from five people to finish him out for this year. Even if he gets everybody filled and everything else, it's only five months left in the year. So there will only be five months of this sixty-nine thousand dollars. So it's, it's, it's misleading how this has to be asked for because it's part of the agenda that, that will carry forward. Yes, it will be sixty-nine thousand in future years. But for right now, it's not. It's only five months of the sixty-nine thousand minus the fa- the, the attrition that he's had from not being able to fill all his positions. So this year, not so much. Yes, it will be sixty-nine next year. Like I said, I, I'll, I'll finish with just saying one thing. I'm absolutely, absolutely wanting to have the conversation is if, can we privatize this? But even if we buy these new tractors today, and buy these new mowers today, if we decide to privatize, being ready to do the proper thing and do a level of service that's comparable to what we would expect from someone else, even if we do that today, we can sell these mowers if, after this mowing season. We can take those tractors and hook those box blades to them, or them leveling blades, excuse me, uh, those leveling blades to them, and go out and fix roads with them. So we're not going to be wasting the money. We're just going to be having five pieces of road equipment, if it gets to there, for the, for less money than one road grader. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
There you go. Well, you didn't, on the boom, on the boom mowers, that would have been our responsibility all along, correct?
What the contracts, I wanted to say something too. The fourteen contract that we bid, that Commissioner Turner referred to, we actually spec fifteen-foot batwing mowers in that contract. We did not spec the type of equipment in the fifteen contract. We kind of left that open to the contractor. But what we said was that we wanted the contractor to mow the road sides, the front slope, the bottom of ditch, and the back slope of the ditches, whichever equipment he wanted to. Now, we bought the boom mowers, or leased them, so we can do the ditch clean, but we also do the vertical cleaning along the roadways that was not part of this contract at all. So we, we've gone above and beyond what we'd asked the mowing contractor to do to meet the level of service that the residents wanted us to meet. And, and I, I agree, we, we did not talk about what are called the road scrapers, but it does give us dual capability that particularly after these rain events, we can put these road scrapers on these tractors and go out. We're not cutting ditches, we're not pulling shoulders, but we're smoothing the roads back down to get rid of the potholes, the wash, washboarding and the washouts. We can do that tremendously faster and get the roads passable again until the motor graders can get there. So I, I, I agree, it, it's, it's a dual purpose that we're doing, that we can do more road grading that we need. And I will agree that we have a lot more mowing in the south part of the county than we do in the western part of county and even in the northern part of the county, up in Bostonwick and all that area. We've got a lot of roads that we need the fifteen footers on. Not every road, I agree with that. We do have the zero turns. We use the inmate crew labor to run the zero turns. They pick up the garbage, they pick up the trash, they pick up the litter, and they run the zero turns. Supposed, you know, as much as we can ahead of the big mowers to make it more efficient. So I think we're being almost as efficient as we can be. Uh, we brought the inmate labor crew contract y'all several months ago, and I think we showed the savings, labor savings, just by using them of over two hundred thousand dollars right there. So with the equipment that we furnish to them and the labor they, they perform with all we're doing, I think we're doing a pretty good economical benefit to the county.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Press a question, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
We had, we had said something at one time in one of the meetings we had had a while back, and I had brought up the possibility of just buying three fifteen footers instead of, instead of five and just utilizing two of the ten footers we have now. And for the boards, um, for the board's sake, what, what we came up with is, that's very difficult to do because you may rope, do ten roads in a row that you need fifteens on, and then you get to the one that's ten, and you fold one up and do the ten. So it's not like we could take the tens and, and go mow everywhere with them because on the ones you need fifteen foot, you'd be, go back to making two loops on all them again. So that's the reason, I think in a, one of the meetings or whatever, somebody came up with the idea, why not just buy three instead of five or whatever? And, and that's the reason why is if it, it, every one of them that you don't buy, you're going to reduce efficiency. Every fifteen footer or so.
Mr. Libel.
Mr. Tompkins, and, um, as far as the lev- leveling blades, I'd like to hear your opinion and comments on the possibilities of taking our Class B roads and upping that frequency. As you know, we only drag or use a grader on those roads as needed. When it's not passable is the key word. But is it reasonable to think that if the efficiencies we're talking about here are realized, that at some point, can we do an analysis of, of doing better service on our Class B roads for our residents?
Absolutely, and that's one of the things we, we looked at with this. We have the equipment that we could do, we call Class B or Class Two roads. We, we grade those on an as-needed basis. And the key word you write is passable. If it's got a couple potholes in it, a couple things, yeah, and they're still passable, then we're going to maintain our schedule on our Class One roads. These tractors will enable us to go to more of our Class Two roads, to grade them after these events, and even grade them when they need to be graded. Uh, right now, we, we've got, we got unindated. As soon as people see a grader in their area, everybody in Class Two Road was calling in saying it's impassable.
Yes, they do.
And so we go check them and see, and a lot of them were still passable, and we had, we had to go by. But we got sidetracked, and I'll be the first to admit it. And we started doing more Class Two roads, and we could not get our Class One roads done. And so this would enable us to do more of the Class Two roads. And these, these road scrapers, they're not conventional box blades. Everybody thinks you just drop the box blade and go. These have the capability, they have actually three blades in them, more like a, a farm implement that the farmers use to level fields with. But these are able to be tilted and, and adjusted to match the road grades. I'm not getting rid of the road crown. I'm keeping the same road crown, so the road will work functionally as it's supposed to. We're not taking the crown out of it. But we're not cutting shoulders, we're not cutting ditches, but we're making the roads passable. And this will enable us to do this a lot more frequently and a lot more efficiently.
That's much needed. That's worth supporting right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tompkins, um, I, I want to make the record clear on something. When, when this came before the board back in those days, uh, the contractor was called in. His equipment was, um, inspected prior to mowing. And there was some problems with the way our director handled it. And I remember the attorneys cleaning it up for us. So if you want more information, go there and find that out. You can find that out. I'm not going to get, I don't, I wasn't privy to all that. I saw what was going on. I was here that day. But that's what, the items that were requested by Public Works to do the job back then was requested by Public Works. It wasn't a commissioner stating that I need more of this and more of that. It wasn't that. And it was, Public Works said to us, this is what we need to do the job with. So now we found out there was some little quirks in there, and yes, my concern again is now we're being told this is what we need to do the job again, just four years later. Is this going to be what we need to do the job again? And I think that's one question. The other one is, along the Commissioner Libel's conversation about Class Two roads, tell me the plan that we have when we put these on the street. What's our plan? I have yet to see that plan. And I, we know the MSBU roads, we've got that. We've got a plan for those roads. You know, we mow those roads, we grade those roads, we drain those roads. We do things. I want to know the plan for the other ones.
Okay, to answer your, your first question, I wasn't here either.
I know.
Okay, we, and I'll say, we inherited some things that we're trying to clean up. I can tell you that we ran into some problems with some of the equipment that we purchased. I'll be the first to say, I, I don't think we bought the appropriate equipment. It, I, previously with the other county I worked at, I had mowing under me, and I saw what we could do with the equipment we had. I've talked to other contractors, I've talked to other counties and what they have purchased. And, you know, we, we, I'm not saying we made a mistake, but we could have bought different equipment. But I'm not going to dwell on the past. I'm trying to dwell, get to the future that we can provide a level of service. We all have made mistakes in the past. I'll make mistakes. I'll be the first to admit it. But I'll, I'll try to do my best not to do that. As far as the plan is concerned, what we would do basically after rain events, we have our three area supervisors. They know what roads need to be done to have, we have historic problems with. We know the roads that need to be graded. And, and so that, I don't have a written plan right now to give you. But I will assure you that we can go do the roads that need to be done. We, we pretty much, our three-zone supervisors have been in for years. They, they know each zone like the back of their hand. They know, they know a lot of our residents. That we can almost tell you right after it quits raining, the residents are going to call us. I mean, we, we've, we, we know them by first name, you know. We can hit those roads now. We don't have the equipment to do anything with it now, other than our motor graders. And sometimes it's very difficult to take a fourteen-foot blade on these graders and get down some of these muddy roads without basically creating more problems than we're trying to cure. These smaller tractors, we can pull these leveling blades, we can smooth them back down and keep on going. And that's, and then once we get our Class One roads done, then we'll have time to drop back and get our Class Two roads done. And I, I'll say this, I'd love to pave every road in this county. But I haven't hit the lottery yet, and the county hasn't hit the lottery yet.
I don't think there'd be enough money if you hit the lottery to do all of them.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pickens. I just have a, a comment and then a couple of questions. I was, uh, at one of the transportation meetings, um, when they were going to let the contractor go. As well, just a citizen before I got elected county commissioner. And, um, and I know the mowing wasn't going well, because I started hearing complaints, um, even before I decided to run, about the roads and, and mainly the mowing. But those are two of the biggest complaints that I get as a commissioner in South Putnam is, when are you going to come take care of my road, and what about the mowing on the side of the road? So anyway, listening to the figures at the transportation meeting, it looked like there was no other decision than for the county to go into the mowing business. And I don't think any of the commissioners at the time wanted to go into the mowing business, but that's what they, they had to do. So we are in the mowing business. I do think that, um, I appreciate Commissioner Turner's, um, work on this, and I appreciate all the commissioners' input on this, because this is a very important decision. But I think what we're looking at doing is enhancing a service that we are in and that we are providing. And, and I think that the purchase of this equipment from the, the extra tractors and also to the mowing units and the, and the leveling blades, not a box blade, but a leveling blade, will enhance the services that we're trying to provide at the best value, the best cost for our citizens. And am I a proponent for sending this out to a private contractor? Yes, I'm an independent businessman, just like everybody sitting up here today. And I think that's the way we need to move it. Right now, I think that we need to seriously consider this. One question I have, Press, and, and I spoke to Commissioner Jeb Smith from St. Johns County, and I understand that St. Johns County mows in-house, right?
Yes, they do.
And I also asked him if he was familiar with, um, leveling blades. And he said he was, but they have less than fifteen miles of dirt roads in St. Johns County, so they don't have the problem.
They got six point two miles.
And I think he said he only had about five miles, and I couldn't believe it.
Fifteen?
It wasn't very many.
Reckon we can sell him some?
Exactly, so, um, but I do have a couple of questions on, on the, um, the equipment. Is the Kubota equipment holding up? I, I know, because I know some farmers are John Deere people. They actually use Challenger tractors, which is from Caterpillar. Um, so you've had experience with both. And then the timeframe, I know we're on a certain cycle. If everything goes according to plan on grading the, the number ones and then availability to get to the number twos. And then on mowing, how, I know you've put some numbers together to see how this you think will enhance it if we're on an eight-week cycle down to a six-week or a five-week cycle, and do you have that, um, do you have that information?
Yes, we're, we're, we're actually trying to get down to, to pretty close to a four-week cycle if we could, and that's, that's our goal. And yeah, St. Johns County, we did the mowing in-house. And we, they used the Challenger tractors, which is ring-powered. That's what we bought for our boom mowers. We bought the Challenger tractors, I believe, Bill's, I think we had bought the Diamond, uh, brand, uh, boom mowers that sit on the side of the tractor. They, we went through the same analysis, St. Johns County. We got beat up all the heck about the same thing. Why are we doing mowing? Why are we doing mowing? And we did the analysis, we took bids on it, and it still was level of service we needed to provide. Because St. Johns County is very unique. They have the northwest, northeast part of the county is very urbanized. You get down to Hastings, the middle part of the county, hey, now Hastings is very rural. What we did was, we did put out a, what we called a small mowing contract for the urbanized areas where the contractor uses zero turns to mow basically the subdivisions and those type of streets up there. We did have problems with that. We, last three years I was there, we ran out of money on the small mowing contract, trying to keep up with those roads. We did very well with the batwing mowers. We had the fifteen-foot Bush Hogs. We have all those roads in Hastings and everywhere else, you know, long roads we got to maintain that the state so graciously gave us back in the sixties and seventies, uh, to maintain. So we did, we did that, and we did this analysis several times, and it came out. So we did, we did that, and we did this analysis several times, and it came out, excuse me, that it was cheaper, level service was better doing it in-house. And same thing, when the, when the boys weren't mowing, they were on the labor crews, or they were running a dump truck, or they were running another piece of equipment. But we didn't sit idle. And we actually had a mowing manager over there that his job was to keep the mowers running, keep them on schedule, they could change minor parts in the field, they could put new blades on. You know, if a chain came off, or a belt got slipped or something, he had the equipment right there to fix it on-site. And I'll say this, one of the other things we did was we did herbicide spraying, which was a tremendous help. And I'm, I'm trying to get that initiated here, and that was part of the contract, if you read the contracts we did, that we had requested the contract to do herbicide spraying, and they didn't even want to bid on that part, because they didn't want the, have to hire the people to do that. They just wanted to do, just put the mower deck down and go. There's things we can do to enhance it. I believe the herbicide spraying, I talked to every farmer around here, every one of them use herbicide spraying in their ditches right now. Mike Revels, I can't think of the other one, but all of them do it, to keep the ditch, to keep the growth down, ditches to keep the water flowing. So I think the, the equipment that we're buying is, is good equipment. We have not had any problems with the tractors themselves. The Kubota tractors have functioned very well, other than the normal wear and tear and maintenance that we would have on them. We haven't had any major problems at all with the tractors. We had problems with the mower decks. These were not heavy-duty mower decks designed for roadside mowing. They were originally designed for the guy that's got a 10 or 20-acre horse field, and he goes out once a month and mows a horse field, they would do great. But these mowers take a lot of abuse roadside mowing. The new ones, this 15-foot footer, are the most heavy-duty they make. I did compare the specs of these mower decks to the Bush Hog mower decks. I had found little or no difference in the specifications. The deck thickness, the steel and all that was the same. In fact, the warranty was just a little bit better on the Land Pride mower decks that we're getting. And I did talk to the supplier, he says that they haven't had any trouble with some other, large mowing contractors that are using the 15-footers, they had, haven't had any service calls on them, other than just normal wear and tear and changing blades and that kind of stuff. So I believe we are getting the right equipment. Like I said, we have not had any problems with the tractors themselves, they have functioned very well for, you know, the time we use it. And I'll, I'll answer this, Commissioner Harvey, about, we went to the 40-hour, 4-10-hour days, our production has increased significantly. Yes, the equipment is sitting on Friday. I do have boys that said they would love to work overtime and come in and work Friday or Saturday, but I don't have an overtime budget for them. We do have a crew that comes in that works Friday, they're off Monday, but they work Friday. We call them a response crew, because they're here to help if anything comes up. They have normal duties, they do, normal work that they do, but if there's something that comes up on a Friday I need them for, I have them here to respond to it. I don't have to call a crew in and pay them overtime. That has worked very well for us. I don't know if we could stagger crews, have them work, you know, have mowers work, you know, Tuesday through Friday, their 40-hour week and have the equipment, but then we're putting more wear and tear on the equipment, too. So it's, it's kind of a trade-off on that, but there, there's certain, you know, certain things we can look at, if that's desirable by the board, and we could, you know, have some of the mowers working Tuesday through Friday, so they're, they're working continuously. But I, I do think overall, and I agree with you, I was a businessman, private practice before I came into government work. Believe me, I know what it's like to be on that treadmill to make payroll every week. It's not something you want to get, it's hard to do at times. And I agree with, with privatizing work, if they can provide a level of service. And sometimes that's very difficult to do on the private sector. As I said, as you said, Commissioner, they're in it to make money. They have to meet that payroll every week. Now, we have to meet the same payroll, but we're in it to satisfy our customers, our clients, our residents, that we're doing the work they want done to the level they want it done. And there, there's a little bit of difference in, in, in meeting that type of expectation, rather than, man, I got to mow that road, I got to get it done in 14 hours or 10 hours for me to make any money. And I understand that difference. But anyway, I, I, I think I've talked too much, but I.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one last comment. And I, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but the decision of the Board of County Commissioners back then was not to mow the backside of the ditch, because what happened is they were getting in the ditch, and it was so wet, they were just tearing up the ditches. So that's why, and the calls I was getting had nothing to do with the backside of the ditches. They had, the grass is too high on the side of the road. They, the backside of the ditch was not a concern. So, and, and that was just, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lible?
I thought you had a question.
You gave us no breaks this morning, so you need to hurry.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just going to make a, quickly, that I took the math and I talked to, you know, I talked to Mr. Bill, and I, I got a lot of taking into the cost, doing a depreciation on the equipment, taking in all the maintenance, and I exaggerated a lot of the maintenance, you know, because I, I exaggerated it on purpose, because I felt like county employees might tear up more equipment, just, I exaggerated it. And I did come up with the number that we had at one time for the contract, to contract it out, and what it's going to cost us now, they weren't really that far out of whack. They were pretty, in my, my numbers, they were pretty close. Where they went out of whack was the fifth or the sixth mowing, which is something that we would have to provide as a service to our people, no matter what. But if we're asking a contractor, he's going to have to charge us for that fifth or the sixth. And that, that's where I really saw it, and, and that wasn't, the other thing was the blades. That is a major thing. We have these storms, and everybody's road is a mess, we have so many dirt roads, they're, they're all a mess. Now you've got five tractors that you can put out there, at least so we don't lose, you know, an SUV in a, in a hole. So it, it, the numbers did come out all right. I was a little concerned to start with, but I pushed a lot of numbers and.
I think we've all pushed the same numbers.
Well, we got to be conservative, you know, we don't want to be just throwing money out there, or growing our government, so. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move on item number 13, if you mi, if you don't mind, I'd like to go 13 first, or either do them together, whichever you prefer.
I almost at this point think we can do 12 and 13 together.
Look at counsel.
I move, I move that we, that we approve the request from Public Works on item 12 and 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a proper first, a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion.
I'm opposed.
Okay. All those opposed, say they're opposed.
But I do want to commend Commissioner Turner on the hard work and thinking outside the box. I think he's done a great job. Thank you, Commissioner Turner.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the board very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is Clerk of Courts, Mr. Kenny Downs.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smith is on a well-deserved vacation, said he's sorry he couldn't be here, but we don't have anything today.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, appreciate it. All right, and so now we've already done our public hearing, we're going to appointments. Do we have any appointments?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
I have none. I know these people are in a hurry. We'll go to our county administrator.
You do have.
Yes, sir. I'm just handed a letter from our county attorney. We do have to start working on getting our appointment for our Value Adjustment Board. It's a requirement by Florida Statute 194.015. It's a request that comes from our, I believe it's Mr. Smith's office, via property advisor at office, so we need to try to get some folks appointed to that, that committee, I believe, rather ASAP, is that correct? Mr. Manning?
Who was on it last time?
That I don't know, sir.
I was in.
You, too? Okay.
And I really enjoyed it.
I was going to say, I don't mind being on it, I'm very well.
You need this on my motion because they're at-large two ho, two board members, or would they, or did they just agree to do it, or?
Well, agree.
But Mr. Chair, just, just for, just for edification, there's Value Adjustment Board, three appointments, two board members who own homestead or property within the county, and one citizen who owns homestead or property within the county and is not a member or employee of any taxing authority, and may not represent property owners in any administrative or judicial review of property taxes.
You knew that was last time, Mr. Chairman?
Judd Newfield.
Wonder if Mr. Newfield would be, would be willing to do that again and just carry the adjustment board forward to this year? I mean, if y'all both agree to do it.
We're willing.
Mr. Pickens, or I mean, or Mr. Lible, do y'all have, do y'all want to serve on it real bad or something?
In the past, Commissioner Turner, out of respect for those running for office, we, we kind of volunteered folks with, out of race that time of need to serve on the boards, because it can be contentious. It's not been in the last few years, it's been run very well, and, but I've seen it when it wasn't, so, that's all.
That's, what you're saying is you think that Mr. Goddard and Mr. Pickens might ought to do that?
I thought that's what I was feeling over here.
Not a lot of choice is left now.
Well.
It's an odd gubernatorial election year where we have three commissioners running, when normally it would be two.
That's right.
Okay, well, do they just volunteer? Is that what they do?
It, it's, well, it's a board appointment, so it'll be by motion.
Mr. Pickens, are you going to throw something at me if I ask you that you volunteer?
I'll shield you.
Not while the camera's on. Not while the camera's on.
Okay, well, do we want to ask Judd, does he want to do it again, or?
I, I think we should ask him, yes.
Yeah, but today we can.
Appoint him upon his saying that he would accept, or no? Don't you have to have this pretty quick?
Yeah, I don't, when is our first meeting?
I'm, I'm not sure when, sir. We'll schedule the organizational meeting, it's usually sometime in May, but just for clarification, Tom Townsend was our representative, Newfield was with the school district.
Oh, I thought you.
Thank you, you're right.
We actually have two citizen representatives, one from the school district, one from the county.
Two from the county, isn't it?
The county representative last year.
That's two. At-large members from the county.
No, it's two board members and one citizen.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what it says on my agenda, if that's, if that's incorrect, we'll have to address that.
Might check into that.
Yes, sir, we'll do.
I stand corrected.
Okay, so we have another, well, this is our last meeting in April, so this needs to be done by the next meeting in May.
Well, the next meeting in May is May 8th, so.
Okay, does that give you the, does that give the time that, that they need to do their organization and what have you? I mean, from somebody who actually has been here before? Okay, okay.
Sir, you want to make a motion?
They said that all they had to do was volunteer, is what?
Now, Mr. Manning.
Now, we need a motion to appoint two.
Yeah, it has to be appointed by.
I move that, that Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Goddard be appointed to the Value Adjustment Board.
Second. Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then you'll, and then you'll talk to the other individual, somebody will, before next meeting?
Yes, would the administrator please call Judd Newfield before the next, when Tom Townsend, excuse me?
Will do.
To see if he wants to carry forward. If that suits the other commissioner.
Yes, that suits.
All right, anything else there, Mr. Suggs?
Just under my comments, it's just, you know, just, we've got the meeting here on Friday with the folks that presented us today with the, with the book Building the Vibrant Community, that's going to be here Friday, or Friday morning, I think, starting sometime around 9:00 and then sometime around noon.
That's the 4th.
The 4th, yes.
Yeah.
That's Friday, I believe that's correct, is it not?
Next Friday.
Next Friday. Yes, Friday the 4th, May 4th.
Right.
And then Saturday, May 5th, we've been, I'm in contact with Congressman Yoho's office, who's putting together a workshop for Putnam County. I'd like to offer them up the use of our, our commission chambers here for that Saturday morning. They said they'll need room for about 180, 200 people.
What day is that?
That's Saturday, May 5th.
May 5th.
So we'll, with consensus of the board, we'll, we'll make that available to them, and we'll work on the logistics of that, if they so choose to use our, our chambers here.
Suggs, like, Mr. Pickens, I will not be able to attend that weekend. Those are big graduation days for schools.
Yes.
Not to mention the mug race that morning.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Absolutely. There's a lot going on that day.
Well, you know, and I'm glad to hear that, so I'll reach out to the congressman, let him know that, there might be a change of, of dates, I don't know. Just received the email this, this past week, and wanted to talk to you folks about it.
Mayor Berkowitz's funeral was that day, too.
Sir?
Day is that? Mayor Berkowitz's funeral?
What's that date?
On May 5th.
It is.
Isn't that right?
Yeah. Okay, so, I, I, I'll take that back, I will. And also just wanted to say that the Project Putnam, as our support for that project moves forward, we were, we just completed the first report, quarterly report, to Congressman Yoho's office, on behalf of Putnam County and the projects that we were working on. We got an email back that said our, our list and information that we included looked very good, and they're excited about putting our portion of the report into the plan. I have not yet received a, a draft of that report, as soon as I do, I'll forward that out to all the commissioners. But that's what we're dealing with right now. Don't forget, we just kicked off budget a couple weeks ago, so we will be moving through the process of putting together what we hope to be a very exciting budget for you folks in the next few months.
Exciting, I love it.
And thank staff for all that they've done, and as you can see here this morning, it took about 15 or 20 minutes to do what we did, but I think it is one of the best things that we can do for our staff, is to publicly recognize them and thank them for what they do. You see the excitement on their face, and you see the look, that they do a great job, and we should respect that and thank them every opportunity we get. Thank you all for your, for your service.
I was hoping you'd tell us you was almost done with the budget.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to say I was, too.
Mr. Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, I have to announce, this is required statutorily, that I, I need two executive sessions with the board. Executive sessions are closed sessions, where a court reporter is present, and that is to discuss litigation strategy. The first executive session is for the matter of Melissa Cooper and Cooper's Closet versus Putnam County. I have that scheduled for this afternoon at 2:05. What we will do is open the transportation meeting at, at 2:00, do the invocation, the pledge, whatnot, and then go ahead and recess that. Everybody will be asked to leave their room, except for the, the five of you all, the administrator, myself, and a court reporter, we will discuss that litigation that will be recorded by a court reporter, and then we will go ahead and close that, and then you can reopen the transportation meeting. The second one that I need to announce, we will need to have, we're looking at May 8th, and that is to discuss a workers' compensation claim with an ex-employee by the name of Gregory Rogers. We'll go ahead and get that advertised, once we have some further information, but I needed to announce that on the record during this open, this open meeting, that we will be having those two executive sessions coming up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Why, why May 8th, do we have that much time to wait on a comp, a comp lawsuit?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manning, do you have anything else?
That's it.
All right. All right, let's start with Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start out by saying that I think that what we did today is going to turn out
that what we did today is gonna turn out to be a more efficient way to run, and in the long run, is gonna actually make things cost less. But I also want to say that I was truly meaningful when I said that I want to have the conversation about can we take some of this mowing outside. I want to have that. I think the first thing, and one thing to keep in mind, is that we're gonna, our mowers that we bought are zero-turn mowers, this will be their third year. They don't last as long as Kubota tractors and heavy-duty motor decks and things like that. So, by this time next year, I, I would expect to be hearing from Public Works that they need another set of zero-turn tr, uh, mowers. And if they do, it might be that we could try and identify areas that Commissioner Harvey was referring to earlier, where there's just not a lot of road to do, and if there's a whole area that's that way, maybe we can identify that area and put that, put that contract out for bid, just like we did the mowing contract for the courthouse and all the facilities, which last month, we let that contract to an outside firm, because it was in the best interests of the county, and probably for less money, and what Public Works should go around and do all that. So, anyhow, I welcome that, that, that discussion when it comes time. I would also like to join with, with Administrator Suggs, and, and if anybody that can, needs to come to that Quinn Studer thing on that, that day, I think that's an opportunity that we do not need to pass up. And it would be much better if the room was full, than for somebody that, out of the goodness of his heart and the friendship with one of our residents, that he had close ties to one of our residents, that he comes in, and then we don't show up and fill up the room. I think that would be a crying shame, and I, I don't want to say that, well, I just think it would be a shame if we didn't care anymore about our community, than we show up for somebody that's in that event. I'd also, Administrator Suggs is probably gonna dart me with his pen when I bring this up, but.
I might be packing, you better watch out.
The, about a month or so ago, we found out about the, about the chance to become an opportunity zone for Putnam County. There was, in our area, and I hope I don't, Matt will help me if I mess up here. I found out about it on a Thursday morning. We had until Friday afternoon, maybe it was Wednesday evening, we had until Friday afternoon to turn this stuff in, to turn in the paperwork. So, Administration, Administrator Suggs was gone, so Matt put his shoulder to the wheel, and got the paperwork turned in, and got us included, we asked for eight opportunity zones. The Bobby Payne and Ms. Leota got on board with us, and did everything in their power to push the governor to approve the opportunity zones. We, I think we had eight of them that made it to the final pick, and then we ended up getting three that, that go to Washington to be approved. So, I don't think anything's final or approved yet, but we have three in the final bunch that was sent to the Department of Treasury, I think, for final approval. So, anyhow, I just thought that I wanted to give kudos to Matt this morning for jumping on board and helping with that at a last-minute notice, and, and Leota and Bobby Payne for the same, for jumping on and helping us get something done in a two-day period that should have had three weeks to do it. So, for that, I wanted to say thank you. And I also wanted to say that I attended an art show at the Bronson House on Friday night that was real nice. If y'all ever get the opportunity in the future to do that, you can do it. They'll even give you a little glass of champagne if you drink that stuff. And we had a plant sale on, on Saturday that I went to at the fairgrounds. It was also very nice, so just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make it really quick and brief today. Save Robman Bass Tournament was last weekend. Hundred-and-one boaters were, boats were out there. People started getting there at 2:30 in the morning to go fishing. Just can't understand that one, but they, and they stay until 7:30, 8:00 at night. Fishermen are just different, I guess. But I was, I do want to say that it was a great turnout, and for all those of you who supported through your prizes, the fishermen really appreciated it. And I just want to mention this, I know you get emails from people throughout the state about, you know, partial restoration of the reservoir. I'll just go on record and say this, it's kind of like the chicken and the pig go for breakfast. Well, the chicken makes the contribution, but the pig gives its life. For, partial restoration is not an option out there. It's 21 billion gallons of fresh water that we can drink if we need to. And I tell you, when people call it a cesspool, and you see two otters playing there on Friday night when you're setting up, and on Saturday morning after the boats leave, and you see all the bass that are brought into that place, and caught out of there, it's not a cesspool, folks. It's a thriving environment that happens out there on a watershed that we desperately need. And, and what really bothers me is with, when you hear about Everglades restoration, and they're gonna be building reservoirs down there, but yet they want to tear ours down. And I tell you, there was people from minority status out there, fishing for substance that day. They weren't fishing for sport, they were out there fishing for their meal. And without that, it's gonna be a lot harder for that. So, I just wanted to say thank you all for your participation, and Save Robman, thank you, sir.
Mr. Lible?
Thank you, thank you very much. I spent last Saturday from March for Babies, formerly known as March of Dimes. This community, as usual, stepped up and met a goal of $70,000 in contributions-
Wow.
-to the March for Babies. Very, very nice work. We're known for that, and we're supposed to be the poor rural county, but when it comes to-
That's right.
-contributions, that you would never know were the king, the champion of it all. This Saturday, I want to encourage everybody to come out and experience the current blueberry harvest and crop that's going on, in the way of attending the Boston Blueberry Festival. We will have blueberry pancakes like no others, about 250 blueberry pies will be up, and blueberries themselves will be up for sale. And a bumper crop of vendors will be there. It's probably gonna be, without a doubt, the best blueberry festival yet in history. So, please come out and join us for the Boston Blueberry Festival this Saturday morning. Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Pickens?
Thank you, Chip. Aren't you the chairman of the March of Dimes?
I will be, this coming year. I will lead that effort, and hopefully we'll beat $70,000 when I get that big check from you, Mr. Pickens, we'll go over.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, a lot of things going on in Putnam County last weekend. I spent most of my day, Putnam County celebrated Earth Day along with the rest of the country at the Dunn's Creek State Park. I want to compliment Sam Carr for his efforts, and the, the friends of the Dunn's Creek State Park for their efforts to set up, there were about ten booths there and presenters, and they asked me to say a few words at the beginning to kick it off. It lasted from 10:00 in the morning until 5:00 PM, and I left at about 1:30, and 150 people had come through the gate. So, it was a successful event. They had, also had pontoon boat tours on Dunn's Creek, which was unique for a lot of people who haven't gotten out on the river before. So, and the second thing, on a, on a sadder note, it was in the paper today, but most of you know that Mayor John Berkowitz, Mayor Pomona Park, lost his battle with cancer. From what I know of John meeting him, he was a champion for Putnam County, for Pomona Park, South Putnam, and he was just a class act. So, if you keep his family and thoughts in your prayers, I would appreciate it. There will be a celebration of his life at 2:00 PM at the Pomona Park Community Center, which is right where the fire station is, and if, if you want to attend that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if you didn't get to meet him, he, he was a very unique man, and quiet, always joyful, and he made some very good French toast. I'm not a big fan of French toast, but he always, he made the, on the first Saturday, they would always have a community breakfast down there. I just want to say, we are so fortunate to live in this county. There's something going on every weekend somewhere. Just get in your car, or for me, I jump in the Jeep and go out, go down these dirt roads that we have. But it, it's just, we're, we're very fortunate. We live in a great community, we really do. With that, our meeting's adjourned.